Welcome, everyone. I'd like to call the June 13th, 2023 Escondido Planning Commission Meeting to order. The first item on the agenda is the flag salute. If you'd all raise, please.
Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, united in the world, with liberty and justice for all.
And if we could have the roll call, please.
Chair Paul?
Yes, present.
Vice Chair Barrett?
Present.
Commissioner Barber?
Present.
Commissioner Fitzgerald?
Present.
Commissioner Macaro?
Present.
Commissioner Spear?
Present.
And Commissioner Wyler?
There.
All present.
Next item is approval of the minutes from the May 23rd, 2023 meeting. Do the commissioners have any, any questions or comments on the minutes?
Move approval of the minutes.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Chair Paul?
Yes, approve.
Vice Chair Barbe?
Approved.
Commissioner Barber?
Approve.
Commissioner Fitzgerald?
I was not present, so abstain.
Commissioner Macaro?
Approve.
Commissioner Spear?
Approve.
Commissioner Wyler?
Yes, approve.
The vote is six, zero, one, to approve with one abstain.
Thank you. Uh, next item, written communications. Do we have any written communications, Alex?
We have one open for the actual, the specific plan. However, I believe we'll be reading that into the minutes at a later time.
Thank you. Oral communications. This is the opportunity for anyone in the audience who has anything to say that's not on the agenda. You have three minutes. Seeing none. Uh, the next item is our public hearing tonight. PG, PHG 20-0028, East Valley Specific Plan. And before we have this staff report, um, I'd like to talk about a couple of things related to this. Um, first, I've asked the city attorney if they, if she could, um, explain two items for us. One is, um, the disclosure requirements. I don't know if there's, um, special, special requirements for disclosure from the commission because we live or work in the area, or if we're exempt because of this. So she's going to speak to that for a minute. And also, Proposition S, how it might apply or might not apply in this case. Um, go for it. Thank you.
Okay, so, um, regarding disclosures, I wasn't sure exactly, you know, what you were looking for. So I just kind of have, I'll give some general rules about disclosures and recusal and that sort of thing, and, and we can go from there. Um, so there's basically three things you need to be aware of when you're thinking about disclosures and recusals. And most of you probably know all this, but just real briefly, um, the first is, is a financial conflict. Um, and the general rule is that there's a financial conflict of interest if it's reasonably foreseeable that the decision will have a material financial effect, um, on the official or a member of his or her immediate family. Um, there are some kind of general guidelines there. Um, if you own real property, um, that is worth more than $2,000, um, that's generally a, uh, financial conflict. Um, there's a presumption that if that property is within 500 feet of, um, the, the relevant property, that, that's the presumption that there is a conflict, um, or a decision will have a material impact. If it's a thousand feet away or more, then there's a presumption the other way. The presumption is that that will not have a material impact. So that, that might be the most relevant to, um, what you're thinking about tonight. Um, is it helpful if I kind of give a general, just some general rules of, of the other areas, bias and communication? Okay. Um, oh, sorry. What I didn't mention about your, the financial conflict is, um, it's really important that if you do have a financial conflict of interest, you must recuse yourself. Um, you may not participate in the discussion of the item, or, um, in any way, uh, you know, be involved in that. Um, so under that scenario, what you would do is you would want to disclose first. So you would disclose your, your, your interest or your conflict, and then you would recuse yourself and leave the room while that, uh, agenda item is being discussed. Um, so then bias, uh, basically that is the idea that, um, uh, the idea behind it is fairness, right? So there's a rule that you should avoid personal bias, which is, um, when a commissioner has a personal interest or involvement with the outcome of a matter or with one of the participants. So for example, if a family matter, a family member is bringing an item before you, or if, um, you know, your worst enemy, somebody you've had a long time feud with, um, is involved, that sort of thing would indicate a bias. And it's important not only to, to not be biased, but to not have the appearance of being biased. So you have to be aware of that as well. Um, and again, um, you know, you would want to disclose your relationship, um, and recusal in that sense is, is going to be a judgment call. There aren't quite the bright line rules that are laid out with financial, um, conflicts, but, um, you would kind of look at that as a case by case basis. Um, and then just the last thing, real briefly, is, um, communications. And that's something, again, you want to be conscious of disclosing. Um, if you have communications with one or the other, you know, one of the parties who's coming before the commission, um, for example, a project proponent or a project opponent, um, just, it, it's important to disclose those communications so that everybody's aware of, um, of, of those before going forward. And if you have any questions, oh, one other just tidbit, it's really important to look at your agenda before the meeting so that you can think through those issues, because you don't want to come into a public meeting and realize, oh no, I might have a conflict, but I'm not sure. I have to think these things through. So try to make sure you've looked at the agenda and you're clear on whether or not there is a conflict. If you have a question about anything, feel free to call my office and we can make sure you get the advice, um, that, that will lead you to the right decision there.
So there, there isn't any exemption because this is a huge area or something like that?
No.
And then, and then Prop S, please.
Oh, Prop S. So the staff report is going to address Prop S, but I'm happy to, um, just give a little short answer if that's helpful. Okay. So, um, for those of you might not know, um, just real quickly, Prop S, um, passed in 1998, was a, it's a citizens initiative that amended the general plan to require a public vote for any general plan amendment or new specific plan area, which would increase residential densities, change or increase the residential land use categories, or change any residential designation to a commercial or industrial designation on any property designated as rural, estate, suburban, or urban. Um, the important thing for tonight's meeting and what makes this a pretty simple, um, explanation here is that in 2020, the city council made a determination and passed a resolution, and it stated that a, a change in general plan land use designation from a non-residential designation to a residential designation does not trigger Prop S. Um, that's Resolution 2021-109, and it was adopted by the city council in July of 2021. So that makes it really clear, because in this instance, there's only one small area, um, and again, I think staff is going to address this in the staff report as well, but there's only one small area that is actually currently a residential designation. All the rest are not, and so Prop S is simply not applicable. In the one, uh, area that is a residential designation, the, um, specific plan would not be increasing that, uh, density. So it's, it doesn't have a conflict there.
Okay, thank you very much. And then the other item that I wanted to go over was, um, just the, the amount of time, um, to review this document. So, um, staff has said that tonight, we're, we're going to provide their comments, and then they'll, then they'll bring it back to us. I, I guess I'd like the commissioners', um, opinions about how much time they think that this is going to take. Um, I think we have some, some options, and one is to do this real fast and say, oh, this is a great document and, and go home. Um, there's another option is to say, no, this is, this has a lot of detail, and, um, and maybe we, we don't get it done tonight. Maybe we have to come back. Um, part of that would be, how late do you guys want to stay tonight if you think that there's a lot to go over? Um, we haven't had any late meetings in like a long, long time. So I'd like you to think about, think about that, and think about also the option to have a subcommittee who, to go through the comments and meet with staff to talk about that. Um, and I think that's it. So I'd like to go around the room and talk about the disclosures, and then if I could get your opinions about if you think this is going to take a long time or not. You want to, you want to start?
No disclosures.
No disclosures.
No disclosures.
No disclosures.
No disclosures.
I've got a clarification question, because I, I haven't, I, I don't have any disclosures per se, but I have talked to several different people about this, their thoughts on this, what it means to them. So is that a disclosure, or I guess I just disclosed it?
[laughing]
But what I don't have, you know, what I'm, because I've talked to several people, do I need to name all of these people, or is it just a disclosure that I've talked to several people?
Yeah, so I think this is kind of a different, if, if this were, um, a case where an applicant were bringing something before you and you had specific people involved, I think in that case, it would be important to disclose who, you know, who you've met with and who you've spoken with. In this, if you've just generally spoken to people in the area, I believe that's probably a sufficient, uh, disclosure.
Okay, okay. Thank you. And I don't think I have anything special I need to disclose. Um, but comments also about how, how long you think this is going to take. Dave?
I'm willing to stay as long as it takes, but I'm going to be respectful of others might have time restraints. So I'd, I'd like to hear what the others might have to say.
I'm open to whatever you decide as a whole.
I'm ready for a lengthy discussion and, uh, question and the answer tonight. I do not think it would be, I don't, I don't want to rush this. I think tonight would be hasty.
I think in my case, the, I would say that I, I certainly am willing to stay as late as we need to this evening. Um, I think I'm interested to hear what some of the comments, comments are in order to know whether or not we'll need to continue, continue the actual discussion, or, uh, simply rest, let it rest tonight, and then let staff bring back next time, which I believe was the plan, uh, bring back the revised version.
I'm happy to stay as late as anyone needs. I personally am comfortable with this study. There's a lot of, um, information in here for sure, and I'm looking forward to comments. But for me, myself, I'm pretty comfortable with the information that I've read, and, you know, I'm happy to participate in as lengthy as a conversation as you'd like.
This is a super important document, especially based on the number of units that are being proposed and the increase, a significant increase in non-residential square footage. Um, there's a lot in here to really digest. So certainly, I'm willing to stay as long as it takes. We've done this before with the Climate Action Plan. In that case, we went page by page by page over several meetings. I, I don't know if I'm, think it's appropriate to do that on the dais again. Um, it sort of worked the last time, but boy, it took a long time. So for me, I wouldn't have a problem having a subcommittee, um, if the rest of the commission thought that that would be appropriate. But if there's a subcommittee, it, that review has got to occur relatively quickly and get back before this body with the changes that are recommended out of that subcommittee. So, um, you know, whatever the rest of the planning commission feels, uh, those are my feelings. Um, but I am willing to stay as long as it takes to try and get through this.
Okay, so, um, how, how about we do this? We, let's go till nine, let's go to nine o'clock, and then we should have a pretty good feeling by then, um, whether we can get it done in another hour, or whether we are done, or whether we need to do something else. All right? So we'll play it by ear until nine o'clock. Okay. Okay. Adam, I think you're up.
All right.
Thanks, everyone, for indulging me there.
And, uh, thank you, Chair Paul. Um, welcome to the commission, Chair Fitzgerald, uh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Fitzgerald. Good to have you here. Um, so I'm Adam Finestone, city planner here. I'll be giving you guys a run-through of the East Valley Specific Plan and the document as it sits today. Uh, so our goal is first to go over the specific plan, to talk about what it is and why we need it, um, to discuss towards the end. We'll, we'll get into a discussion of potential areas of concern, and then we'll request some feedback back and input from the commissioners that we can, uh, look at. Sounds like we'll have a, a significant discussion on that as we get towards the end here. So, uh, I just want to kind of run through an agenda for what we'll be discussing and how we'll be looking at this today. I'm going to give you guys a bit of a background on specific plans in general. I'm going to, again, introduce and give a little discussion on the East Valley Specific Plan and why it's important. Um, one of the things that it is, that is really relevant is its ties to the housing element and, uh, the status on that. Um, we will then go through an overview of the specific plan, and then detailed discussion of some of the development standards in there. Following that, I'll, uh, talk briefly about, uh, consistency with the general plan, and, uh, then some associated policy documents that might need to be revised along with this. Uh, we'll touch briefly on the environmental review, uh, look at the public outreach that we've done to date, and, uh, then have that discussion as far as, uh, further consideration, um, further modifications potentially, whatever it might be. Uh, staff will give you a little bit of input and info, and then we'll ask the commission to provide some, uh, some discussion and some in, information and insight as well. Uh, then we'll, at the end, we'll get into a discussion of what next steps will be. So, um, so specific plans are a way to systematically implement a general plan. They're governed by Government Code Section 65450 through 65457, and, uh, general, or a specific plan, it has to include text and diagrams, allow for, uh, specific standards related to the uses, infrastructure development standards, et cetera. Um, and then it'll also have to include a, uh, program of implementation measures that would, uh, actually make the specific plan come to fruition. So in Escondido, you'll see here, it's a map of, uh, we've got currently 15 specific plan areas. This is from our general plan, so it identifies 15 areas. Um, the, uh, map towards the right there, that's an inset, um, it's the downtown specific plan is the purplish, the orangish color is, uh, South Center City Specific Plan, and then the East Valley Specific Plan would shoot off just towards the right of the, uh, downtown specific plan. I'll show you that again in more detail when we get through this, or as we go through this. There's a list of the down, of the existing specific plans in Escondido. You'll notice, and I didn't count these per se, but it is not necessarily the same as the number that we have here. Uh, names might be different as well. These are just identifying areas within the general plan that are slated for specific plans. Um, and then these are the specific plans that would implement that area, those areas. Some of them, as I said, don't have a specific plan actually approved, uh, for implementation. Um, some, a, a lot of them do. Some of them, I think, for instance, uh, Escondido Research and Technology Center and the Harmony Grove Specific Plan both implement the, uh, Specific Plan Eight. It's the lighter blue to the left of the, of the inset there. Um, this doesn't have a laser pointer, couldn't see it anyway. So, anyway, so the, it's, it's a, not a one-to-one relationship, but specific plans implement the general plan designation of specific plan area. Couple of covers, you know, this was the downtown, this is the, uh, Escondido Research and Technology Center, uh, the villages specific plan is the one on the right. You, you'll see, depending on what they are, when they were drafted, if they're a city document versus an applicant-driven document, et cetera, they have different, uh, different appearances. More recently, the specific plans that you're going to see, and the ones that are primarily, uh, staff-initiated or city-initiated, are going to be a lot more thorough as far as the, um, the land use considerations and, you know, the, the, not as necessarily as technical as you'll get in some of like the, the research, Escondido Research and Technology Center. That's really thorough, but it's really dry, right? It's, it's implementing, it's, hey, this is how we want to do this. It's not a vision statement or vision document, I think, in the way that we would have, uh, that goal for the downtown specific plan for, uh, the East Valley as we're looking at that, for South Center City, so. And here we go, getting into the East Valley Specific Plan. This is the, uh, screenshot or a snippet of the part of the cover page there, so. Uh, so what is it? It's a new specific plan for the East Valley area. It's, uh, kind of in, uh, looks at a vision for the future of that area, looking at mixed use, commercial and residential development and, uh, and, um, implementation. It addresses land uses, mobility, parks and open spaces, several other items as well. Um, and what it really does is it provides guidance for private development and for public investment in the area. It's got a 2035 horizon date, which is, it may sound kind of soon. It's only 12 years out. Um, two things. One, this was, uh, started, this effort was started, and we thought this would be where we're at probably a year and a half ago. Uh, but two, and the bigger one, is that that's consistent with the expiration, or with the, not expiration, with the horizon date for our existing general plan. So we time the two, we time this to kind of sunset with that as well. Excuse me. So, uh, you'll see here, this is the, the actual location of the specific plan area. Um, it starts just to the east of the Palomar Heights Project that's currently being, uh, constructed, um, more or less between, runs between Grand and, uh, the flood control channel. Uh, and then on the east side, it, it ends there at Harding. There is a small portion north of the flood control channel at Ash that, uh, wraps in some commercial properties and vacant, uh, city lot over there. So the East Valley Specific Plan, it's intended to re, uh, revitalize the East Valley in that stretch there, um, for, through the use of, uh, or through mixed use residential and commercial development. Uh, the, it really is encouraging of high, doesn't, high-density housing, so we'll get more people in the area that would be, uh, there to support the commercial uses that are there already. And, uh, it also serves, and this is an important one, it serves as the rezoning effort required for housing element certification. So, um, in order to get our housing element certified, we still need to rezone a number of properties in order to meet the RENA that we have, and that is, this is, this document serves as that, uh, as that rezoning effort. So, uh, this is laid out, this is directly from the specific plan. So the East Valley Specific Plan incorporates a dynamic mix of land uses, ensuring a variety of residential options linked together through streets and a business corridor, through safe streets and a business corridor. I, I apologize. The plan creates an inviting atmosphere and quality of life with attractive public spaces and connected paths that leverage the Escondido Creek Trail and provide a unique and artistic identity that attracts local residents and North County, County Inland residents to live, shop, dine, and recreate. So that's the vision statement straight from the specific plan there. Backing into a little discussion here again, then of the housing element. Um, so the housing element does two major things. It provides an assessment of our current and projected future housing needs, um, and looks at a constraints analysis in meeting those needs. And then it also addresses the preservation, improvement, and development of housing, uh, through the use of goals, policies, objectives, resources, and programs in order, and necessary in order to do that. Veronica Marone is on our staff here, our principal planner, presented that document to you folks probably about three months ago, and, uh, she's, uh, laid out all that information in the past. She's been a very big resource for me as I'm going through this as well, so. As we've noted, and I know everyone's heard RENA, the Regional Housing Needs Allocation, that is the number of units that the city needs to plan for. So we need to have zoning in place that would allow for and accommodate at least 9,607 units, uh, 3,100 or so of them being for people who are qualified as low or very low-income households. Uh, that is typically people making or households making less than 80% of the area median income adjusted for, uh, household size. Uh, moderate income, we need about 1,500 of those units. That's anywhere from 80 to 120% of AMI. And then above moderate income, uh, about 5,000 units almost is what's on, uh, on the radar there for, through the RENA. So EVSP is broken down into eight chapters. You'll see them there, the intro, the vision with goals and policies. There's a land use section, a parks and public realm chapter, mobility chapter. We look at, uh, it looks at public services and infrastructure. And then a lot of the heart of the discussion that we'll be having will regard, will be related to, uh, Chapter Seven. That's the Development Standards and Design Guidelines. And then it ends with a chapter regarding implementation. So there are a number of goals in the, uh, in the specific plan that, a lot of them are very similar to the chapter names, chapter headings, um, but they're, they're here. I'll kind of run through them with you. So we've got two land use goals. Um, they are a self-contained land use pattern that offers a mix of compatible land uses and community spaces, and a housing program focused on affordable housing opportunities. We have sustainable and equitable, equitable development. There's one, uh, goal there. It's an environmentally mindful and equitable development standards for the plan, for the plan area choices. We have, uh, three site and building design, uh, goals. Alluring building forms and streetscapes that enhance the physical character of, and pride of East Valley. Uh, development of sites that seamlessly support all right-of-way users, and, uh, quality landscaping and green space throughout the public realm. There are four, uh, goals related to mobility. Uh, public and private development that provides safe vehicular circulation while reducing overall vehicle miles traveled and promoting alternative modes of transportation. A safe and connective pedestrian and cyclist experience for residents and workers through quality design, public amenities, and accessible facilities. Transit-oriented, uh, I'm sorry, a transit-oriented, uh, community with safe, reliable, and timely transit options, and more efficient parking strategies. We have one Parks and Public Realm goal, which is accessible public gathering spaces with social and recreational amenities. There's an economic development goal, robust economic activity within the plan area, and there is a, one public service and infrastructure goal, which is high-quality services and infrastructure that accommodate project, projected growth in the plan area. Now, all of these, um, all of these, uh, goals are supported by a number of policies within them. Those are all laid out in the, uh, in the actual specific plan document. I'm not going to get into those, but they provide more detail in how, uh, in what we should be doing in order to reach those goals. So policies to establish and how to get to the, uh, to the implementation of this document through those goals. Little bit of discussion on land uses here. The existing land uses, um, out there are general commercial, there's, uh, which is typically retail and service uses. There's, uh, both commercial and hospital professional, professional. Those are generally medical and general office. There's a little bit of multifamily residential, which I'll show you in just a moment on the map here, and that's usually apartments and condos. And then there's also a lot of areas that are non-conforming, lower-density residential development that had been built prior to the, uh, HP Hospital Professional or the, uh, CP Commercial Professional designation being placed on a number of the properties. So, um, I don't have a pointer here, but, uh, basically the magenta kind of purplish color, that's that HP area that I was just mentioning. Um, it is, it is basically, um, older residential and some office space. The intent had been, when that was designated for hospital professional and, and professional office use, was to be supportive of the hospital that had been there, right? So there was a lot of ancillary medical uses that are, a lot of them are still there. I think there's kind of a good dental scene down there, if you ever like to do that, but, um, so it's, uh, it really is, it, that was the intent, though there is a lot of development that happened there prior to the designation being placed on the site, and that's where you've got a lot of the currently non-conforming uses. The red area is, uh, our commercial, our general commercial zone. And then, uh, Dara had mentioned the area that is a, uh, residential area. That's the small area, and I wish I had a pointer, but it's a brownish area towards the right side of all the magenta and that light pink. So, um, the, if you can, it's basically just east of Ash, north of Grand, so.
South of Grand.
Yes, exactly. Exactly. So, uh, the proposed land uses are, generally, they're mixed use. They're really encouraging of commercial uses. Uh, there's several, there's three categories. Uh, there's a mixed use category, which is commercial and very high-density residential. and very high-density residential, up to 80 dwelling units per acre. There's an urban residential four or five, is I think what it's called, representative of the urban four or five general plan designations that allow between 21 and 30 units per acre. So that's got the, that gives you the low and the high end there, 30 per acre max. There is also a limited allowance for retail and office uses in that area. Then we've got our general commercial designation, which again, retail and office, retail and service uses. There's a park overlay zone too, so. This is the proposed land use category. So the orange is the residential, the urban four or five residential. The magenta or purple is the mixed use. And then the red boxes you see there, those are the commercial areas, the general commercial. The areas with the crosshatched blue and the little blue lines down the alley, those are park overlays, so we'll talk about that more in a bit as well. Talk about that right now. So the parks and public realms, and before I get to that, we are going to circle back to some of the residential land uses again shortly, so. Stay tuned. So the parks and public realms chapter in the specific plan really looks at activating passive and, or activating spaces for both active and passive open space and recreational uses and opportunities. It creates, as I've shown or as I've mentioned, a park overlay zone. And the locations of that overlay zone were really selectively identified and with the goal of increasing the geographic area within a quarter mile of a park. And it's not just within the specific plan area. It increases that area for residents outside of the specific plan. There's also an incentive program that's been identified within the specific plan to encourage dedication of park, of land for park open space use, for public use. This is that exhibit that I had mentioned or that I was getting at with regard to the park overlay zone. You'll see the three kind of turquoise boxes in there as well as the lines down the alley there. So the two of them that are in the heart of the specific plan area, those were placed in that location really in order to expand the, the area that is within quarter mile of a park. You'll see, it really does push out to the north and to the southeast, the area that could be accessed, that people, that people within quarter mile of can access apart from. The little alley green space, they're kind of linear parks as well. So that pushes it out on the south as well. The other areas that you'll see, the, the orange circles, those are existing city parks. And you'll notice that the one property that's, the one park overlay property that's kind of in the northern corner, northwest, I'm sorry, northeastern corner of the specific plan area, that doesn't really do much to change the, the areas that are within a quarter mile of a park, but it is a property that our utilities department owns. So we have some flexibility in, or we have some say over what happens with that property in the future. It'd be, it's obviously the utilities department who owns that, not the city general fund. The mobility element, or the mobility chapter of the East Valley specific plan, it really focuses on a few things. Bicycle network, which is using the Escondido Creek Trail kind of as the backbone. It builds off and is consistent with the bicycle facilities that are identified in the 2012 Bicycle Master Plan. The pedestrian network as well utilizes that creek trail for the, as a, as a major focal point. And it also looks at and encourages pedestrian-friendly amenities such as wider sidewalks, street furniture, et cetera. Public transit is also highly prioritized in the area. There are, I believe, four bus lines or routes that go either down valley or are circuitous of the area that eventually do wind up going down to the transit center there over on, on Valley and Quince. So there is a lot of public transit available in the area. And there are, there are programs that encourage or policies that encourage the promotion of that. The last one I wanted to touch on is, is a new, a newer aspect. It's not new, but it's a newer aspect of transportation planning called transportation demand management. So what that is, is it's, it identifies ways to reduce the need for transportation through things like, or for vehicle transportation, I should say, for things like offering transit passes to, to new residents in developments, encouraging and promoting teleworking systems or telework, providing end of, end of trip facilities for cyclists. So bike lockers and showers at the, at the office, that kind of thing. So it gives ways for people to be more able to do something other than drive their car to, to the, to the office. That's kind of the intent of a TDM program. So there's more to it than this. It's explained in more detail in the staff report and then even more in the, in the specific plan itself, so. So back to kind of a discussion on those residential land uses. So as I mentioned before, the goal is to really encourage that high-density residential development. We've done that in a couple ways here. We've identified and created a density transfer program. It's very similar and it's modeled after the downtown specific plan's density transfer program. That, I think, was incorporated into the downtown specific plan in 2019, if I'm not mistaken. What it does is it establishes a density credit pool. And how it would work is that properties, when they develop, if they don't develop to the full density allowed, so for instance, if a property was allowed to build 30 units on the site and they only built 20, those extra 10 units would then be placed into the density credit pool. So someone else could use that, those units on another property. It's done through, through managed, the city manages that density credit pool. We require and we place deed restrictions on properties that dedicate their units into the pool so that we know that, that we're not going to exceed what would otherwise be allowed based on the, on the standards in the general plan and the specific plan here. As a reference point, the downtown specific plan, it currently has about 900 units in its credit pool. Most of those came from Palomar Heights. I think they contributed 800 and change into that, into that pool. So there's definitely density out there for use in the downtown specific plan. It is important to note, however, that these two pools are not one in the same units that are put into the downtown density transfer pool, must be utilized in the downtown specific plan. And same for East Valley, they stay in East Valley. The other avenue that we have established through the specific plan in order to encourage the residential development is target production point or a TPP. So what a TPP does is it, it established, it was established by the housing element as a way to achieve our RENA goals. So densities, or housing built at certain densities are assumed to be able to be occupied or rented by people who make a certain income level. The higher the density, the likelihood that the units are potentially smaller by design and thus are more affordable. So anything that's in that mixed use district, that target production point of 45 dwelling units an acre, that would be, we can then use those sites as, as sites within the housing element that would accommodate low and very low income units. 25 units an acre is the number that we need for moderate income units. So that's the number that's been established for the urban, urban residential four or five district. So the goal is, like I said, to really drive that density. And to incentivize it, we've identified that target production point. And if, that said, a developer has the option, an opportunity, if they'd like, to, if they don't hit that density, they can instead pay a fee in lieu of. And that would go into Affordable Housing Trust Fund, which is one of the housing element programs. To create that trust fund and establish that, that's something on the implementation program for the housing element. Let's talk a bit about some of the development standards. So parking is the first one I've got on here. What the unique thing that the East Valley specific plan does for the first time in any document that we've, or any, any policy that we have around here, is it actually establishes a maximum parking requirement instead of a minimum for residential development. The requirement is a maximum of one space for studio, winds up being 1.55 spaces for one bedrooms when you add in the guest, 2.05 for two bedrooms, and two and a half for units with three or more. It does require, though, the specific plan requires that the one space per unit at least be covered. So the studio space has to be a covered parking space. And then one space for each of the other unit types would need to be covered. For commercial uses, it refers back to the Escondido zoning code. We'll talk about this later, but there are some, there is some language in the document with regard to parking that's a little bit unclear. So we'll want to go through that and we'll talk through that. And then I'll work with our consultant afterwards to clarify some of the things in there with regard primarily to minimums versus maximums and things of the sort. We have requirements in the specific plan for bike parking. There's also requirements for EV parking and charging stations and loading zones, kind of ride share, drop-off, pickup, that kind of thing, so. That's all laid out in there, and there's minimums, maximums on all these. Open space standards here are, are for residential units, 250 square feet per unit. 150 square feet of that must be in common areas. 50% of the units have to have at least a 50-square-foot open space area. So it could be a balcony, a deck, patio, something like that. And if someone wanted to dedicate area as open space, for instance, the linear parks or along the creek side, they could do that, and that would count towards their, towards their open space requirement. Open space is intended to be oriented towards the street or the linear parks or creek. And there's an encouragement as well for benches and other pedestrian-scale outdoor amenities and furniture in the open space area. Landscaping standards require a minimum of 35% of a site in the urban residential, 20%, 20% in the mixed use and 30% in any general commercial area. Landscaping is also required within the right-of-way. There needs to be street trees there, and there's intended to be 20-foot spacing there that'll be able to provide 15 to 25% coverage with the canopy once mature. And there's also a stipulation in there prohibiting stormwater basins from being placed in that, in that right-of-way. The other aspect that it has, and this is not necessarily right-of-way or not, this is anywhere, but is a goal or a requirement that we provide vertical landscaping vines or, or other plants that would grow up trellises on walls that are significantly long and blank. One, it beautifies it, but two, it also serves as a graffiti deterrent when you have something like that on there, so. That's, that's called out for in the specific plan. Setbacks are identified here. I'm not going to run through each one of them, but you'll see them for the urban four or five. You'll see mixed use, general commercial. And then it identifies them for front and rear, for alleys, sides, both internal and, and street side, as well as for the creek trail. We'll come back to this again later on as we look at some of these standards and some potential areas to discuss further. There's a requirement in the downtown specific plan, oh, I'm sorry. Well, yes, there, but here also for the, for ground floor residential or ground floor retail uses. Most areas do allow ground floor residential uses. In fact, throughout the specific plan here in East Valley, we do allow ground floor residential uses. But in many areas, the areas that you see here, basically the corners and then the major streets, Ash, Valley, and Grand, we have stipulations in there that require the ground floor space to be built to commercial standards, regardless of whether it's being utilized for residential or commercial uses. So that would require, for instance, minimum ceiling heights up to 16 feet, a little bit more depth in the, without having walls inside, so a 25 feet or 25% of the building depth as open area. So you can actually do something in there before you get to the, you know, the wall to go down behind the, to the hallway or whatever it is. Also requires oversized storefront windows. And the one thing that it, that is a little significant is it requires that, that the structures be built to meet commercial building codes, to meet the most restrictive potential use there. So it would have to be built such that someone could come in later and change it into, let's say, a restaurant or a retail establishment or something of that sort. So that's the requirement as it's proposed in the specific plan here. Most of the areas along Valley and along Ash are in that mixed use area. The area, the street, or the properties along Grand, though, they're in that urban four or five, urban residential area, so. Something to think about, we'll talk about that a little bit more as well. Building heights are shown here, ranging from a maximum of anywhere from 35 all the way up to 75 feet. 35 is in the kind of more, more smaller lot residential areas that are more interior to the site. They're the areas that are currently built with either some small office uses or the lower-density residential. And it expands as you go out from there. So along Pennsylvania and along Ash and parts, and then adjacent to the Palomar Heights project, you get up to 55. And then along East Valley and pretty much the, everywhere that's either the mixed use or general commercial designation allows up to 75 feet. Excuse me. So I want to talk a little bit now about consistency with the general plan. Land use and community form chapter is, that's what identifies land use designations and permitted land uses there. Current land use designations are, for the area, are general commercial and office. And there is a bit of that urban three designation. I pointed that out over Valley and Ash, I'm sorry, Grand and Ash and Ohio, that kind of area there. It does, however, have a mixed use overlay over the entire area that's being covered by the specific plan. And the general plan actually has language in there regarding mixed use overlays allowing up to 80 dwelling units per acre. And that is regardless of what the underlying zoning designation is. So even though, for instance, the urban three designation typically would only allow 18 per acre, because it's got the mixed use overlay on it, it allows actually up to 80. Therefore, we are not increasing the residential density on that area. Does not trigger Prop S. The proposed land use designation now for the area is going to be SPA, specific plan area. Precisely, it would be probably, I think it'll be specific plan area 16. We have 15 so far, so this will be the 16th. The, the specific plan is intended to be implementation of the, of the rezone necessary to get our housing element certified. So as I mentioned, our housing element was brought to you folks a few months back. It was approved by the planning, I'm sorry, the city council back in March of this year. And then about three weeks ago, we got a letter from HCD, the State Department of Housing and Community Development, stating that they will certify the, the housing element upon adoption of this East Valley specific plan. So that's where the, the importance of this document comes in, is our housing element is, is reliant upon it. The housing element, or the East Valley specific plan accommodates some of the RENA numbers primarily for the moderate and above moderate income units, but it also provides a significant buffer for the low and very low income units. Derek kind of already spoke to all of this on Prop S, what it's applicable to and what it's not applicable to. So I'm not going to run through this again, I think we've covered this. So in addition to the implementation or the adoption of the, of the East Valley specific plan, there's going to be associated revisions to a couple other documents that are required. One is the actual general plan element, the general plan, the land use and community form element. Excuse me. We'll need to revise the underlying zoning designations, I'm sorry, the underlying land use designations in there to identify this now as a specific plan area instead of the general commercial and office and urban three designations. We will need to revise the East Valley target area, East Valley Parkway target area text. That's where the, it calls out for the need for a mixed use overlay. We'll have to revise that text to really say that the East Valley specific plan has been created as that overlay or in order to implement that overlay. There's going to be a need to add a figure and text describing the new specific plan area so that looks at the, it talks about the size, location, guiding principles. So that looks at the, it talks about the size, location, guiding principles and implementation status of the specific plan. That's, well, there's one of those for every SPA, so there's 15 of them in the specific plan, I'm sorry, in the general plan right now. And that's what we would look to if we had those, if we had that specific plan area established before drafting a specific plan, we would look to that in order to guide the drafting of that specific plan. In this instance, we're creating the two at the same time. We would need to also then revise the map that shows where those specific plan areas are. That was that map I showed you guys earlier on that had the 15 of them scattered throughout. That's what we would be revising. Now, we also have an East Valley Parkway area plan, which is initially, was initially adopted, I think, in 2004. And it really had the focus of trying to encourage commercial development and revitalization through that in the area. This specific plan is partially overlaid with that area plan. So parts, the areas of the, of the East Valley Parkway area plan that are covered by the specific plan, those areas will be pulled out of that area plan because the specific plan will be the more up-to-date document. I know I'm getting looks like it's, it is a bit confusing. We've got a specific plan that is a new document that will supplement or supersede, I should say, any of the areas that are in common with the East Valley Parkway area plan. So this will be the guiding document, the zoning document for the areas that it covers. And those will no longer be part of the East Valley Parkway area plan. We have gone through environmental review on the project. We had a programmatic environmental impact report prepared that was prepared by our environmental consultant. Through the preparation of that document, they identified potentially significant impacts in the areas of air quality, biological resources, cultural and tribal cultural resources and noise. And they've identified mitigation measures that we were able to incorporate that would reduce the first three of those, the air quality, bio and tribal cultural and cultural resources, to less than significant levels. Noise, however, remains significant and unavoidable impact. And that's primarily construction noise and traffic noise that you would, you would hear when you're putting that many more units around building. Every time you're doing construction and the amount of construction that's anticipated or that's envisioned, that's what really triggers that here. That's not to say that mitigation measures are not going, are not available for noise. It's just that there's no way to say with certainty that those will mitigate the noise impacts down below that, that level of significance. So that draft, we put out a draft of the EIR back in March, so end of March. It was out on the streets for 15, I'm sorry, 45 days. And we received two public comments on it. We're in the process of working with our consultant to, one, respond to those public comments and two, to incorporate findings and mitigation reporting program as well as a statement of overriding considerations, which has to do with reasons that the document or that the project should be approved even though we can't mitigate that noise impact all the way to a less than significant level. So that will be brought forward with the specific plan when we bring it back to you guys in a couple weeks. Public outreach was very, very strong in the early goings on this document. So we did virtual meetings. Of course, that was in 2020, so it was the beginning of the pandemic. And we were limited to virtual meetings. We held a couple of those. They were both noticed in both English and Spanish to everyone who lived with, worked with or owned property within the, within that area, within the East Valley specific plan area. There was an online survey available and a mailer was sent out to business owners for that. We've maintained a project website for this. It's been the same website that we've been maintaining concurrently and utilizing along with the, with the housing element. So there's been a lot of information added to that over the past couple of years. The most recent draft of the, of the specific plan, as well as the environmental impact report, were placed on there back in end of March. We also had a few presentations here before the planning commission back in 2021. One of them, I think, was more overarching on the entire housing community investment study. I don't have the details of the other two specifically in front of me, but we did provide a brief presentation on the, on it at that point, gosh, two years ago now. Since then, public outreach has been minimal. We have been really focusing on getting the housing element certified. And we wanted to make sure that this document remains consistent with that. So we weren't really doing too much with this for the time being. We also needed to make sure that the environmental review was consistent with this document, which had to be consistent with the housing element. So there's been a bit of delay there, but we're back on it and we are moving forward. We will, we will be sending out, we did not send out mailers for a public hearing for tonight. It's not required for a specific plan because it's an area-wide document. But we, based on the fact that there has been minimal outreach recently, we will be doing that. In fact, they got mailed out yesterday for a meeting on the 27th. They'll be published in the paper as well. This meeting was noticed in the newspaper. So wanted to kind of now get into some of the areas for further discussion and for further consideration. This is what I've noticed and there's others, I'm sure, as well, but things that I wanted to discuss and primarily it's related to development standards. There really becomes a conflict when you try to, when you try to obtain very high-density housing, but yet you have requirements for a lot of additional space-taking things, right? So in this instance, you have a requirement in our specific plan for 250 square feet of open space per unit. We've already seen in our downtown specific plan, which has a requirement for 300 per unit, we've seen how difficult and virtually impossible it is to get anything near that when you're getting up above 50, 60 units an acre. I think that we wind up, I did some work on this a few years ago. I don't recall for sure the details, the exact numbers, but I think anything above 60-plus units an acre was really only averaging about 150, 160 square feet of open space per unit. I may not be exact on that, but I know it is, it's, it's that kind of a situation where you've got a conflict. If you want high density, you've got to give on something. You can't have a ton of open space and a ton of landscaping and a ton of parking and large setbacks. Those are all kind of, they don't work together in order to allow a big, more of a developed site. So that's a conflict that I've noticed. I've got the slides again for the, for those development standards coming up. And I've got them kind of in the backend here so we can look at those again. But also wanted to note that requirement for the ground floor retail, whether that is something that we should be planning for in the whole area. I think that there's areas on the, in the mixed-use designation where it obviously makes sense because that's the intent. The, the commercial or the, I'm sorry, the urban residential, that mixed, that urban four or five, that's a question of does that or doesn't that make sense? And I wanted to get some input from you folks here. Location, there we, that we mentioned. And then the parking standards, as I said, were a little bit, they're a little bit in need of some clarification. I don't have anything in any detail on what those are, the clarifications, but really is the, the issues that are identifying whether this needs to be noted as a minimum, a maximum. The specific plan says you can have a maximum of X per residential unit. And then it requires you to look to the, to the zoning code for commercial uses. Even for mixed use, it says combine the two. Well, if you have a maximum for residential and a minimum for, for commercial, you know, it's, it's an interesting mix there. So that's something I do need to work with our consultant to get some, to get some clarifying language on. There's other items as well that, that are not in, you know, not specific, but that we've flipped through and noticed. One of the things that, gosh, I'm not going to even try to remember. I've looked at so many things right now, but there, there are a few other items too that are minor clarifications, changes. There's punctuation, there's, there's numerology numbering of things. There's one area in there and I don't know why it's got, how we wind up with a portion of our historic downtown district jutting out into the East Valley specific plan area. There's an exhibit towards the back of it. I think it was a mistake with plotting and mapping, so that's something that needs to be addressed. So, you know, there, there, those kinds of cleanup things, so. What I'm asking for tonight is your general feedback and input. And then in the other areas for consideration, I'll pull up the, I'll pull up, as we get through this, I'll get back to the, those development standards. We can look at those in specific, but that's where we're at. I'm not requesting any formal action from the commission tonight, but really more looking for that discussion and, and input. So next steps from here, we'll, you know, I'll work with our consultant and review whatever the information that you provide to us here is tonight. We'll work with our consultant to make those changes and, or to look at those recommendations so that they can provide recommendations to us based on their best knowledge and best practices in the industry. We'll be asking for, we'll, we'll be presenting potential revisions back to the commission here. Hopefully, we'll be coming back in two weeks for a formal recommendation to council. The specific plan or the, the presentation in a couple of weeks will include a summary of what those changes have been. It's not going to include, hey, I changed it to, you know, into on, but it'll include the, any of the substantive information that we're going to address. And then we hope to be at public hearing for city council on the 19th of July and then get our housing element certified over the summer, so. With that, I think I'm ready to hear from you guys, so. So I only gave you an hour.
Thank you very much for that presentation. So before we have any questions for staff, this is a public hearing, so I'd like to take comments from the audience if anyone would like to speak on this issue. We'll give you three minutes. If you could fill out a speaker slip, would you finish, please? Thank you.
I wasn't going to speak, thank you. I'm Timothy Bylash, I'm down in the Delmar area and interested in Escondido. My question would be about the integration with changes to transportation. I am aware that a lot of the schools have trouble for their kids getting to the schools. And so the integration of flexible fleets or some of the newer types of transportation that Sandec is working on and how that might interface with the expansion of housing in this area. Thank you.
Okay, so we're going to start on page one? We're going to start from the left? Oh, you want to read something into the record? You want to do that next?
Alex, well, but yes. And then once he's done that, I think if we can start with the areas that I've, that I've identified with those, with those development standards and open it up from there.
A letter received from Ms. Laura Hunter. Dear Escondido Planning Commission, hope as you review the East Valley specific plan at your meeting on Tuesday, June 13th, you will seriously examine how the plan will affirmatively, affirmatively further fair housing, a requirement of the state. The Escondido Community Housing Coalition has repeatedly asked the city to move on to develop an inclusionary housing ordinance. Ten cities have them already and the county is developing one. There are many great aspects to the EVSP, but the lack of an affirmative requirement to include inclusionary housing is still lacking. Without an ordinance or other requirement, it is hard to see how this plan can claim to affirmatively further fair housing as required by law. Please see the recent news showing Escondido emphasis added and provided the link to the San Diego Union Tribune. Focusing on just unsheltered populations, 13 cities and unincorporated areas saw increases this year, the largest number in San Diego, which had 3,285 people living outdoors and not in vehicles, a 32% increase from last year. Chula Vista had the second-largest unsheltered population with 318 people, a 54% increase. And Escondido had the third-highest with 304 people at a 67% increase. I have also added the most recent letter in the Escondido Community Housing Coalition and information on inclusionary housing and the land value recapture for your information. And thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Alex. Which one do you want us to start with?
Let's go with open space. So this is the standard that's in our, that's in the specific plan. As I mentioned, there is a challenge meeting that requirement if you're also providing very high densities. I'm working with our consultant to get some, some of their best knowledge or best practices, but I wanted to see what you guys think about this size. I know it's kind of tough to conceptualize what 250 square feet times 20 units is on a this-size lot or whatever it is, but generally, I think some of you have been around here while we've looked at some of those higher-density projects downtown. And any insight you might be able to and want to provide would be greatly appreciated.
Start with David?
Well, let me first, this is in general. Given, it seems to me we have two conflicting goals approaching us. The goal to meet our housing requirements and provide a sufficient amount of units. And then the goal to provide a submission amount of parkland and open space. And as I look at the boundaries and see the criteria, I'm, I'm not certain how we can do one. I don't see how we can do both at the same time. To me, there's an obvious conflict and one is going to have to be reduced in scope. That's my only comment on that particular.
Well, I have to agree with Commissioner Barber as well. It's a clear conflict for sure. You know, I'm, I'm all for quality of life and I, I want to see residents have that, you know, area outside their unit to recreate in. But at the same time, in order for this area to get redeveloped, especially at the densities that are being proposed, something's going to have to give. So, you know, I think this, at 250, granted, it's less than what's in the downtown specific plan, but we've been seeing projects coming forward with a request to decrease the open space square footage. I think we really need to discuss this to make sure that we're hitting the right open space area and also get clarification on what does open space mean? Is that, so do you, you know, you have your percentages and landscape area. Is that also open space area or is open space area recreational in a sense? Whether it's active or passive? Because if it's a combination of both, okay, then maybe 250 might be okay, but it might not be. And I think that that's important for this body to, to discuss this very specific item. And I'm glad that Mr. Freestone brought that to our attention because it was one of the key things that I had focused on as well. And one other thing is clarification on the 50 square feet of private open space. Being a deck, I guess the question would be, does that need to be contiguous? Or can that be in multiple areas? And if so, what's the minimum of that, of each one of these areas in order to get to the 50 square feet?
Give me one sec, I can speak.
I know it was a lot, sorry.
Speak to, I can speak to one of those two.
Maybe we would just take it in two parts. One of them being the 250 square feet amount and clarification if the landscape percentages are also count towards your open space.
Correct. So I'll start with the other point first, the question you had as far as the minimum, as far as the private open space, what are minimum dimensions? Does it have to be in one area? Can it be in multiple? That's not discussed in the plan, so we can put language in there. I would be looking to the commission here for any input on that. You know, 50 square feet is not a lot. Five by five would be half of that. And that's, you know, that's basically a place to go outside and turn, walk in a circle. So, I mean, up to you guys what you want to, what input you want to provide to me. But, but that's, that's just kind of a little insight I have. Before we, I turn that back to you guys, though, to answer your question, Commissioner Wyler, as far as what counts towards that open space. Areas within the setbacks that are at least, I think the dimension, if we look to our, our zoning code, I believe anything with a minimum dimension of 10 feet. um, our zoning code, I believe anything with a minimum dimension of ten feet, that is clear from ground to sky, counts towards open space. Um, so if you've got a ten-foot setback, and that area is, you know, landscaped area, it doesn't have to be usable recreational open space, it's just space that is not covered necessarily by structures. So, your setbacks count, anything that's landscaped, as long as it's a, you know, well, your setbacks count if they're ten feet or more, uh, your landscaped areas count, um, even indoor areas that are recreational facilities, so rec room in a building counts, that kind of thing.
Question on that. We're talking about two hundred and fifty square feet here, that's open space. We're taking the private and the public per unit, and saying that two fifty is a, or each of those is a component of the two fifty, for example, if they have a balcony that's fifty-square feet, we're down to two hundred per unit.
Correct.
Then if we're saying we got a ten-by-twenty setback over that proportion, we've hit the two hundred already, just in that.
For one unit.
For, per unit, right? So if that unit, well, that unit's not going to be twenty feet long, or is it? So it's twenty feet, and it borders on a setback, we've already hit it, just with the setback and a balcony.
But only for that unit.
But, when you look at multiple stories-
You're talking about, yeah, right, 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 right. Okay, so, and you said, I think, that in the downtown, we're, they're hitting eighty, or not, not hitting the eighty, they're hitting fifty to sixty with a hundred and fifty right now.
That's my, that's what I believe that, that research I did was, I'm not going to tell you with certainty, I didn't have a chance to look at that, um, but my recollection was one sixty-ish is what they were able to hit on projects that ranged from sixty, about sixty to seventy per acre.
And is that one sixty, looking at the combination of private and public?
Correct.
It is, okay.
Yeah, there was only one project that was very high-density, that was able to come close, uh, and it's because it had relatively small units, um, in, in, they could be providing additional open-space area on a big deck and the like, um, and indoor amenities, it's actually not yet under construction, it was the Quince Street Senior Housing, so it's on Quince and, uh, and Valley, um, basically across from the transit center, on the, I guess that'd be the northeast corner. Um, the Beacon's building, there you go.
Do you recall what density they hit?
They hit, they were a hundred units an acre, but they're, you know, four hundred, four hundred square-foot units. They're, they're really, you know, they're intended for, uh, single senior citizens that, that are able to, um, live in smaller footprints. Um, they also have a very minimal parking requirement there, they requested that reduction, and so you don't have that issue either, as far as parking, uh, taking up a lot of space, so.
Did we have others that you recall that were in the eighty range?
Eighty units an acre? Yeah, um, so, the one that's coming to my mind, I think it was about seventy-something, City Plaza, that's the property, it's on, uh, Escondido and Third or Fourth, I think Third, um, they were sixty-eight or seventy per acre, I think it was, and they were, I think, somewhere in that same one sixty to one eighty, um, square feet of open space per unit.
As, um, someone who designs multifamily, uh, projects, and has to take into consideration the open space, I just want to share how difficult it is, when you are trying to get enough units in to make the project feasible, and then you have to do something like two hundred and fifty square feet per unit. It's really difficult, and it often ends up in not even a functioning, um, site, because you're trying to cram so much open space and hit the landscaping goals, that you really aren't creating a better site, you're creating one that is small units with, you know, it, a lot of corridor, a lot of planters, a lot of things that just really aren't necessary. In my opinion, two fifty is really high, and I would suggest that that be lowered, so we can hit more density, and then have the ability for the development to focus those types of space in the common areas, you know, that can be shared either with public on the exterior, or for the tenants on the interior, like a clubroom, business center, things like that.
Could I add?
Which, which often cannot even be fit into. So I just want to say, you know, if the site plan doesn't allow for those spaces, and the, the plan doesn't, it's still really difficult. I would recommend we definitely lower that.
Where is the consult, where's the two fifty coming from? Where, where did, where did we get that number, and, and why?
We got it out of the East Valley specifically. I really, I, you know, I've, I haven't, I wasn't involved with the, with the, uh, drafting of the plan early on, and, um, I just really became involved with it intimately over the last few months, and so I don't have that background. I, I believe that our prior director, um, Mike Strong, had provided that information and put that, given that direction to the consultant. Um, one thing I can say that might lend a little more, uh, light on this, or shed a little more light on this, is that, as we've all been talking about, the, you've got competing interest here, right? You've got the goal and desire to have high density, but then you've got these high open-space requirements. We do, we have noticed that downtown, as we've mentioned, but, uh, and, and to the point where we are looking at going back to the, uh, going back, we're going to be putting out an RFP in the coming months, to get a consultant that will be looking at the open space and the parking requirements in the downtown-specific plan. So, we've recognized that as an issue, and we've noted that already, we've got, uh, we've got, uh, grant money lined up to do this study, so, you know, i- it's kind of, we're kind of, you know, really putting ourselves behind, behind the eight ball, if we go ahead and continue perpetuating something that we've already acknowledged, is not going to be, is not functional, so.
So, could, could you speak to, um, the, the open space, this linear parks and along the creek? Maybe, was that, was that part of how it got to two fifty, maybe?
Well, what that does is it allows if we go to, uh, where's, let me go back quite a few here. So, the areas, uh, the linear parks, they, uh, let me, actually, this will be better. So, the linear parks are obviously the area, well, they're the areas in the alleys between Pennsylvania, Ohio Grand, and then between, uh, Grand and Second. Um, so, the idea is if you dedicate additional space, wider alleyways there, um, which could be your setback, well, no, it couldn't be your setback, your setback is measured from your property line, so, uh, but if you dedicate, it may be possible that we can do that as easements, so that you wouldn't, you basically would be using your setback as the public open space, but it really is a wash, right? Because whether it's your public open space, or in that linear park, or private open space, it really, it really doesn't change the number. Uh, same thing along the Creek Trail, if you wanted to, you know, dedicate twenty feet wide by, or twenty feet deep by the width of your site, as open space for, you know, a, a little seating area, or whatever else it might be landscaping, adjacent to the Creek Trail, all right, you can do that, but it really, again, it doesn't change that total. So, it helps us get the parkland numbers, but it doesn't change anything to do with the amount of open space needed, uh, needed per unit.
Oh, okay, I, I had some other questions about parkland in general, and I don't know if this is the right time to talk about it or not. Um, okay, so, so I'll hold that thought till, till, till later, I mean, this is, this is the graphic for it, though. Should we be talking about the actual language in the design guidelines? Because that's really confusing, or, or is that going to change anyway, based on our, the output of this conversation?
Um, we can talk about it, I think, if it's, if it's language, or if it's may, maybe information that you're looking to clarify, I think that'd be the way to frame the conversation, because I don't think we've all got, um, well, I guess, we may all have the document in front of us, we can go through that if you'd like, um, but maybe that's something we can do one-on-one, I don't know what the level of detail and how many, how much of it you've got.
Well, you, you received my comments, right? Okay, so this is page sixty, sixty-two, it's seven-point-one-point-two, public and private open spaces, and, and it starts with public and private open spaces, open space is required for each new development, but just that word "open spaces" is used throughout this document to mean different things in different sections, and so that's a little bit confusing.
Can you, what was the page again, I'm sorry?
Uh, sixty-two, and it's, uh, seven-point-one-point-two, public and private open space. So first sentence is public and private open space, and, and just my comment is, we've used open space in, in a lot of different areas, and so, I, I'm not sure if that's a good, a good phrase to use there. And then the last sentence in that paragraph, "New development and redevelopment of residential dwelling units shall comply with the following standards." So if we put this in a mixed, in a mixed-use area, some of the public open space can be, can be used by the commercial, will it count towards the residential?
I would presume so, I, I, I haven't thought about that one, but I mean, you, you need a certain, there's not a requirement for open space for, uh, the commercial portion, there's a-
And so I would say, like, why not? You would think that would be where we would put the public open space, we would put that with the commercial component.
It, it can be where the commercial component would be built, and it can count towards the square footage required for the residential, right? It's-
Okay.
So, you, you kill two birds with one stone there, I guess, right?
Well, not if your project is only commercial. I, I'm, I guess that's a diff, a whole nother question, is, is this, this mixed-use, is that allowing a building over here to be commercial, and a building over here to be residential?
It is.
Yeah, so you could have no open space on the commercial building?
Sure.
Yeah. I, I don't think that's what we're-
You've also got setbacks and landscape requirements that, you know, those, those are going to get you there-
Okay.
At least to an extent.
Okay, and then, um, in the bullet points, um, two hundred and fifty square feet of private open space, and so that's confusing to me, the private open space. So it's, it's private, that it's not open to the public, but it can be shared by, by, yeah.
Yeah, I got you, yeah. And, and I had the same concern on the terminology, because public, to me, means it's open to the world, whoever wants to roll in, versus what I think the intent is common-
Yes.
-open space. That means it's common for everybody that lives in that facility, and then private is specifically to one unit.
Right.
You want to have those definitions in the document?
And, and the next bullet is, "A minimum, a minimum of a hundred and twenty-five square feet per unit of the required open space is provided in a courtyard or publicly-accessible space." So that really means it's pub, it's public open space, and here you put a hundred and fifty feet must be common, and so that's why I said, do we want to talk about the language in the document, or the language on the screen?
I would personally prefer if it is public, and open, that means open to everybody, versus common, which is for everybody in that complex.
Right, I, I would see the commercial component is open to the public, but maybe the residential version is only, is common.
Right, yeah.
Or private, if it depends-
Or, or private, right, common or pri, or really private.
On architectural projects, for multifamily developments, it is always referred to as common space, for the gathering, for that building site, yeah.
And I've experienced the same thing.
Yeah.
So it's just definition.
Now, what, while we're kind of, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, I was just checking where I was, I'm, I'm good. But I, I, I don't know if we've provided any, any real guidance, except that we acknowledge this is kind, this is really hard to me.
So, I, I, I heard that, and I think that's something that we're all, that, you know, staff as well is, has that concern. Um, I'm going to work with our consultant to get some recommendations as far as what is appropriate there, um, and then I've heard and taken some notes here on what the potential, what some of the language concerns that are in here, as far as the terminology and the like, so, I've got that, and if there's anything more than that, obviously, just let me know.
Adam, you're going to discuss the, the two fifty number with the consultant, is that what you just said?
Correct.
I would, I would just, uh, looking at past projects that we've done in the city, I think is very effective.
Absolutely.
I think that, that way of looking at it is, is helpful.
Right, but I, I think we also have to look at it as part of the open space of the whole area, and the parks that we're talking about putting in, and things like that, these li, the linear parks, or the dedicated parkland. Because if you, if, if we're going to have a building with the eighty dwelling units, but we put a park right next door to it, well, that should, that should help offset that open space requirement.
And also, too, tenants today don't, when we design a lot of our micro-units, or four hundred, five hundred square feet, and I even have a project now in North Park where one of them is three hundred, you know, and these are high rents, too, these are not low-income housing, but the general thought about, about these units is, they don't have balcony spaces, these are pretty typically modern designs, but the people that live in North Park are not hanging out in their house, they're not going downstairs to sit in the garden, they are out and about in the city, which is what the, the point of this development is as well. So, no one is expecting to have a balcony anymore, as far as residential apartment units are concerned, no one sits in them, it's, it's just a space to collect junk. Everyone expects to have that open space provided for them from surrounding areas, which is typically how we approach designing our projects, just to share.
So we don't have a mechanism currently to consider public spaces, and how that would impact this two fifty number, is that correct?
Well, the specific plan does, does give you that credit, if you dedicate, or if you create parkland, if there's no parkland, I mean, there, there's nowhere in here that there already is parkland, right? So someone would have to create that. If you create that as part of your project, you absolutely get that credit.
And another popular thing for developers right now, too, with the open space, is dog parks, you know, there, there is usually a large, uh, large-ish area where it's open space for pets, whether it's located on the site, or just adjacent to it, which is, it's pretty, uh, you know, pretty decent trend that's happening.
The public, we're, we're talking about the creek corridor as the only real public, uh, space that's already there, we're not talking about widening or increasing that at all, are we?
Well, there's a project that's currently been in design to make improvements to the Creek Trail. Um, it was a, a grant for, a Prop sixty-eight grant, uh, we got eight million dollars to do improvements, we've just about wrapped up design work on that, we've already done the environmental review, and we're going to be bringing that forward, uh, for contract through the, uh, through city coun, to city council, um, probably in the next three or four months. So, there is a significant, um, investment going into that show, in the next, you know, over the next couple of years.
And, and that, that investment and the improvements will actually extend the perimeter?
You know, I don't know that, I don't think in, in some areas it will, I can say that, not everywhere.
And is it in the ES, in the East Valley specific-
I don't know, I don't know specifically where which areas are, it could be further east.
Further west.
West, east. It could be further one direction or the other.
Pretty sure it's further west.
But there, you know, there are definitely going to be more areas where you can have more seating, more amenities, and then it's somewhere where it makes sense that, hey, you know, right now, what would be the purpose of putting dedicated open space next to a chain-link fence with a, with a, you know, with a torn-up bike path? But when you have that improved area, it makes sense, and would be able to get you some, uh, some credit to do something that you would have to do anyway, and maybe get, uh, get something out of it for the community, too, so.
Be our High Line.
Yes.
Right?
Gosh, I want to go there.
I know, I love that, it's so brilliant.
Okay, we ready for the next subject?
Are we making, or trying to decide on a number, or are we gonna?
Adam said he's going to talk with his consultant-
Yeah, so-
...what they think.
I don't know, I mean, it, it doesn't sound like it's easy, I know it's not easy to come up with a number at this point, I mean, we know that this is an issue, um, I think we've all acknowledged and, and are in, in agreement on that. Um, so I'm going to go to the experts and the people who draft this kind of language regularly, and get, get that from them. Um, so I, I do think that the, the two fifty, though, it came from, uh, from direction from, uh, Mr. Strong, so he's, he's- So he's, he's been giving, you know, he gave that to them and they ran with it. So, but I think over the years, we've seen that that's going to be problematic, so.
When, so I anticipate you're going to get feedback and come back with a revision on that number potentially. And with that revision, you'll give us a basis for that revision. Like, hey, you know, we, we not only discussed this with the expert, but we went out and we looked at examples where this has been accomplished and this is what has been feasible. That would be helpful for us, people like me that don't see what you see every day, so.
Good point. What did the end project look like and what was the, what was the open space? Yeah, that'd be great.
Well, what are you seeing as far as actual projects that are working? I get a 300-square-foot unit down in North Park. Those people there is no doubt, they are walking through the city. We're kind of not there yet here. We will be, but a North Park situation, wow, that'd be fantastic. I don't know. That may be past the 15 years of this plan.
But are you saying that, that we're, North Park, that they're relying on public space and not private space? They're not onsite? They're offsite?
I think it's a combination of, of activities, whether it's going out to eat or going to a museum or whatever other things that are out there for the public that they will not get in their car. They will actually walk down the street and have the choice of hitting 10 restaurants.
They do have that choice. It is mixed-use. If you drive on Alcohone Boulevard today, I mean, I was there earlier and there's six new projects going up. Not one balcony because downstairs is a brewery or, you know, they're within walking distance to University Heights where, you know, there's, yeah, parks. So in my opinion, it's not really, you know, we're not there yet. These are the, this is how the younger generations live now. They don't live in their apartments like we did growing up. You know, they are out and about and.
But we're not going to get there unless we plan for it.
Exactly. It's leading them to water is, you know.
But when you're talking about restaurants, we're not really considering that as what we're talking about, right? Well, mixed-use, but we're talking about a percentage of space that is not that. The 250 number is not restaurants.
Yeah. That would be their private business downstairs. But in most mixed-use, you know, where they do have the booming, you know, restaurants downstairs, it's all patios now thanks to COVID. It is all outdoor spaces. That's beautifully landscaped and, you know, but that would be separate.
So I mean, I would say, think, think about that. We just talk about open space as part of commercial and a commercial component that has the open space should be counted. I don't know. Maybe that, maybe that helps get to that number somehow. Okay. So what's the next one you wanted to go over, Adam?
So landscaping, and this kind of plays into an extent to the open space discussion, but not all, not all landscaping counts for open space if it's a smaller area. When I see this and I see, you know, 35% of a site, that gives me a little bit of concern if you're trying to get 30 units an acre on there in the same manner that, that the open space does. Now, you can use your setbacks, no problem, no question. So that gets you somewhere. Again, I'm going to get some of the, some specifics from some, from the consultant as far as what they are seeing and what they would be recommending here. But just generally, that seems high to me. The, the right-of-way side of it, I don't have any real concerns with. But, you know, street tree spacing at 20 feet on center, that's great. That provides a lot of, a lot of green space in the, in the right-of-way and shade trees. That 25% canopy coverage would be great. Excuse me. The stormwater basin issue is something that I think was identified when, in, over the years, when people would put their, would, you know, would cram their site so tight and not have room to put their basins onsite and they would ask to put them in the right-of-way, so.
So what, which section of the plan is this in?
There's a landscape table. I believe, actually, I don't know if it's a table or if it's.
Section 7.1.4, beginning on page 65. And there's a table that follows on the next page.
Thank you.
And as a follow-up question, the 35% of the site or any of these percentages, would the stormwater basins, could they be in the same location?
Yes, as long as they're, you know, on the property.
Is that, I didn't see it stated. I see it, you can't have it in the right-of-way. I get that. But maybe a notation that stormwater basins can be included in whatever percent of the, of the landscaping of the site. I just don't want them to be exclusive of one another. Because we're, it's, you know, everything is really tight with the high-density project.
And Adam, can I ask, did we have stormwater capture somewhere in this document for these buildings?
As far as capture reuse?
Yeah.
No, I don't believe we do. There's encouragement to that. There's policies that get towards that, but there's not a specific requirement on there. Okay. Say what? Just say, it's, it's in our, you know, in our stormwater and our BMP manual. It's kind of covered there, you know, citywide. But, so it would definitely apply here too.
It would be important.
Along with the building electrification and all those guidelines, right? Yeah.
So the other thing is, and I just wanted to get some clarification again from the, from the Assistant City Engineer, the stormwater basins are regularly counted as landscaped area, correct? If they're landsc, you know?
Yeah, yeah. They can be. Yeah.
So I, I thought parking lots counted too.
For landscaping?
Yes.
If there are, you know, if you've got, you know, landscape islands within them, that, those, that area counts. The lot itself doesn't, but.
But not the asphalt.
No. Hardscape, that is, you know, decorative hardscape. So when you've got stamped concrete or pervious pavers or things like grasscrete, things like that, that counts. But just asphalt or, or standard, you know, pavement, no.
So this standard also says that the areas are required to be irrigated with automatic irrigation systems. So we would put that in the stormwater basin? We would put irrigation in the stormwater basin?
I think it would be irrigated as, as required for the purpose, right?
I don't know. It doesn't say that.
Yeah. I mean, they typically are planted with, you know, is very drought tolerant and they're typically in soils that are very pervious. But the climate we're in, there are months that you do need to water what's there, so.
Okay. So I, I did have some concern about the landscaping requirements. They, they just kind of didn't make sense to me that the general commercial would, would require 30%, but the mixed-use wouldn't. I didn't really, I didn't really get that, why one would, one would require more than the other. The urban residential, I actually did some calculations and, oh, now that I think of it, I left out landscaping, right, when I did that calculation. So I, I don't know, I don't know if that's possible or not. It's a third of the site seems a lot.
Seems like a lot.
It is a lot. Again, to share my experience of having to meet landscape requirements, what it typically can mean before we get a waiver on a project is me putting 100 planters in a corridor. You know, literally, just planter boxes everywhere to meet the green requirement.
I think when I looked at this, I thought parking qualified as landscaping and that's how you could get 35% is because you're counting the parking spots.
It's hard.
That number, those numbers, are they similar in terms of source as the others? And where they came from?
I, I really don't know that. I'm not sure.
There's probably general agreement here that you can look to that, to your consultant to try to get some better, better numbers or at least better explanation at a minimum.
What kind of numbers do we have in other SPAs? You know, I don't know that we have percentage requirements in, in a lot of them. And that was, it's actually, I think there's a, I think the open space and landscape kind of go hand in hand in most locations. And most, you know, I think our zoning ordinance even just says landscaping and has requirements for your landscaped areas. But other jurisdictions have that, you know, X percent of the site needs to be landscaped in their zoning codes. So we don't, as far as I can recall. And I don't know that most of our specific plans do either.
Right. So maybe we don't want to have any minimum landscaping requirement.
So most of the, I think that the way that our zoning code addresses it in order to make sure we have some is that it says that areas that are not used for structures or parking or, or walkways or whatever have to be landscaped. So, you know, it, it doesn't set a minimum, but it says if you're not using it for something else, you better plan it. So maybe that's another, in a more appropriate way. I don't know. I'll look at that. Anything else on landscaping?
I, I think we say take it out.
Oh, I'm not going to go there just yet.
I would certainly ask the consultant, but I wouldn't have a problem removing it mainly because of everything else that's got to be done.
The, you know, the other aspect we've got to think about is what impacts this might have on our, on the environmental review that was done there.
The, the commercial areas where I'm, I'm having a little bit of a concern because we do want to have those trees within the parking lot. They provide shade. It's, you know, those good things. We want the site to look, look nice. We don't really want to go back to the days of, all right, you got a building, the rest of it's parking, you got nothing else. So that was where my concern is, is as far as just removing it in its entirety. But, you know, with the, the urban area and the mixed-use, I think there's enough other things going on there with open space type requirements that we satisfy. Between the open space and the stormwater requirements for residential and mixed-use, we may satisfy this amount of landscape percentage.
Yes. See, for the, the retail or commercial components of this, I'd like to see us drastically reduce the parking requirements. And so then you don't end up with these islands that need to be landscaped.
So I know that there are certain requirements even these days in the building code that require a certain amount of canopy over parking lots at maturity. So there, we can't say, we can't fully eliminate the need for any parking, you know, any landscaping in parking lots, but.
Right. So I, but I'm saying if, if we don't put a minimum, we're going to end up with some landscaping anyway.
Sure. Yeah, the landscape ordinance has, and I think we can possibly point there, it has requirements for X number of trees in a, in a landscape island and this kind of thing, so.
Yeah, I guess my question, going back to those comments where maybe, is a percentage the best way to ensure our, our goals? Or is it some other mechanism like an offset distance? Or like, as you mentioned, Adam, requiring all areas that are not this to be that? What would be the mechanism if not a percentage? And, and are there other mechanisms that are commonly used that aren't percentages?
Yeah, I, I think I'm hearing that there, there are like, like how many trees per park, you know, per parking spice and stuff like that. And, and like you said, if it's, if it's not developed, it needs to be landscaped. So we don't, that's, that's my point is we don't have to put a minimum. We'll still get it because of those other rules.
I, I agree with you. The other comment that Stan mentioned, let's put something in there, not nothing. Because otherwise, we may go the other way.
Unless it's meet the landscape ordinance. I mean, there's your default. So it kind of, you know, as you were telling us about other parts of the code, started making me think, okay, what's on the landscape ordinance? And is the landscape ordinance beyond this or less than this? And therein lies the question is like, okay, which one's more, more, taking up more land that maybe we don't want to have that land utilized for landscaping? But we're trying to create this higher density. When you create that higher density, of course, there's things that are going to give. Landscaping happens to be one of them, open space, those sort of things, which if we reduce parking, then that helps. And maybe there's where you get your open space. You know, it's a, it's a crazy balancing act of, of all of these requirements to create a livable area. So it's, it's tough. There's, there's no doubt. So maybe just taking a look at the landscape ordinance and see how this, this fits with that.
We can, I'll definitely do that. One of the challenges becomes the, you know, if, one of the things we are also trying to do here is to create objective standards, to give so much flexibility with, well, you could do this or you could do that, or, you know, if you do this, maybe, that becomes a challenge. And I know that the, the, the building industry, they want certainty with whatever it is. I almost think that they'd rather have, give me 250 and 30% rather than, well, tell me what you want, you know, rather than having that discussion. So, you know, they, they, once, once the industry knows what they need to build to, it makes it, it gives them that certainty. So if it points just to our zoning code, that's something that could potentially be done because that's a, that's a very direct document. But, you know, the, the flexibility part is great, but it, it's, it's a double-edged sword sometimes.
Agreed. We need to know what to draw, you know, when we submit our packages.
Yeah, I, I agree. I like hard numbers.
Yeah. The, the percentages do help when you're designing a project, for sure.
So does this vertical landscaping connect, help meet landscaping requirement?
Well, it can help you for the foot-wide planter that's in front of the wall that you're planting vines on. I mean, it's not going to give you, it's more an aesthetic improvement to the building than it is. It's not going to get you a ton of, a ton of square footage of landscaping or a percentage of landscaping. It's not vertical. Your landscaping is measured on the horizontal.
Well, I'm proposing, how about if we measure it the other way? The other direction?
That, that's a unique one. I, I'll see if that's ever been done, if anyone's got any knowledge of that. I've never seen it. I mean, I've seen plantable walls and typically you, you can get some credit or some reductions or, or the like. But as far as counting a specific square footage, that's, yeah.
Sure. And we can count it as open space too.
All right.
Another one?
Yep. Let's go to setbacks. So, you know, again, this is something that's, the standards that are in the code, I don't know if there's, or I'm sorry, the standards that are in the specific plan. I don't know if there's something beyond this, you know, beyond the discussions we've been having. When I saw this, you know, the, the thing that jumped out to me, a lot of it, was the setback that's identified. Let's say just in the front yard in the urban area. If you think of the downtown specific plan, any street, it's 14 feet from face of curb. So if you've got a 10-foot sidewalk, you've only got a four-foot setback in the downtown area. That's the requirement. If we're looking at the urban, I mean, the mixed-use where you've got a, you know, that's, that's intended to have similar densities. If you've got a, even let's say, if you've got a five-foot sidewalk, you're still 20 feet from face of curb already by the time you get to your building. Down in this area, I think on Valley, Owen, do you know? Down in this area, I think on Valley, Owen, do you know, are sidewalks a bit wider there than they are elsewhere? Or are they just, you know, the Parkway, I should say?
Yeah, so, I mean, you're talking about the blocks down, in the, blocks of Valley Parkway in the downtown?
No, as you get, as you get into this area.
Oh, in this area.
So typically 10 feet from face of curb to property line?
Yeah, the, the typical, yeah.
So you're 25 feet back already before you even get to where you're putting the building? And yeah, you've got 15 feet by however wide it is for open space and landscaping there. So, you know, these items that we're talking about, they all seem to kind of, you know, you fix one, you fix it all, or you, you know, one of them can, will drive the others. So, at this point, I think, hearing what we've heard from everyone, I think looking at that with our consultant as a more detailed and intricate discussion of how the three play together.
Yeah, the, the density in the mixed use area is higher. So I don't know why you would expect a bigger setback in a higher density area. That's counterintuitive.
Except if you're trying to achieve a certain number of square footage per unit, there's, there's part of it. You know, because you've got a greater setback, well, there's, there's more open space, so to speak. So, there's, I don't, it's not a direct correlation, but it is a semi-correlation. Not much of a difference, you know, between 10 and 15 feet. To get from 25 units to 45 units, I mean, that's a big jump. And all the way to 80 even potentially. So, I, I don't know. Like I said, we're balancing a whole lot of things. Okay, we go back, let's go back and think about an urban area and the downtown area, which is essentially, this is going to be essentially an extension of that to a certain extent. But in the downtown area of Escondido, we've got, you know, the face of curb and all the way to the building. I don't know, we've got zero setback?
Yeah, I mean, the, the requirement most places is 14 feet from face of curb. Whether that's at property line or, you know, five feet in from property line, it's not, that's not relevant. It's, it's 14 feet from face of curb as long as you are on your private property. So, it doesn't matter where that winds up being as long as it's inside your, your lot. And that's most, almost every district. I don't know if Grand Avenue may have a slightly different requirement, I don't recall. Because you've got your buildings, they're all lined up there. I don't know if we've got 14-foot sidewalks on everything there. And if we do, that's probably where that number came from.
Yeah, we did, but now in some places.
They're going to be more. So 14 feet was what that was based on, and that's where we came, got that from. But we're working, doing, obviously, we've done a little bit of the Grand Avenue streetscape work and we're working on future phases as well, so.
Adam, help me understand, you're saying that 14 feet is the goal to where you want to go from face of curb to face of building, correct?
That's the minimum distance from face of curb to face of building.
Okay, that's, that has nothing to do with setbacks or anything else?
Well, in the downtown specific plan, the setback is measured from, not from your property line, it's measured from the face of the curb.
Okay, so that would be in the downtown specific plan, the setback?
Correct.
Here we're talking property line.
Correct.
Got it.
And property line being typically where?
Typical is 10 feet from face of curb.
So you're saying 10 feet from face of curb is your property line and then your setback? So what you're saying is we're pushing this way more than the downtown?
Right, it's 10 to 20, it's what, 20 to 25 feet from face of curb if you're looking at these numbers would be typical.
We're giving everyone front yards again, essentially.
Sure.
But it's not single family homes. It's, and it's, it's commercial property.
Was, but we're talking about sidewalk cafes potentially. We're talking about mixed use areas that maybe benefit from having a wider setback, right? Is that part of the consideration?
It could have been. Yeah, I, I mean, I really, I wish I had that background and knowledge on this, I, I don't.
But are we looking at the urban, that's residential, right?
Correct, it does allow for the potential for, for commercial if you wanted to do a small amount. But it's not, it's not restaurant or service, it's retail or office kind of use. So it's not necessarily the type of thing, I think, where you would expect to have outdoor dining or, you know, you wouldn't see that necessarily.
Can I just ask for clarification? You, you, this was one of the areas you wanted us to look at?
I just, I, you know, as we, as we've been talking through this more, it seems that this is, you know, this goes hand in hand with the other items and other areas we've talked about. So, I don't know that I need any specific numbers or anything like that, but I think it's just the, the idea of, all right, how are we going to get units onto the site if we've got these numbers? And the general, the general idea of we need to look at decreasing the amounts, whether it be setbacks, landscape, open space, that kind of thing. It sounds like everyone's on that same page is what I'm generally hearing, so.
What we're really talking about here isn't primarily restaurant use. We're talking about, as you have mentioned, I think, residential and commercial, potentially one or the other, both.
Well, I mean, the, the ultimate vision would be to have, you know, buildings with a restaurant downstairs and units above it. Or, you know, shops and retail and, and cafes and the like, and then units above it or behind it or whatever. That's the ultimate goal, and that's, I think, what the, you know, this, this would probably allow that pretty easily and pretty well. But, you know, the, the need for the housing units, you're not going to have, you're going to have these vacant storefronts if you're requiring this commercial. And if you're building to this, you know, if you're, if you're having these massive setbacks that's just eating into your site. And there's not a, and there's not a defined use for it yet.
I'm, just a quick thought, you know, we do need to start planning for bicyclists, you know, to be able to, you know, stop at one of these restaurants or cafes, whatever. And part of the setback, just thinking out loud here, could be bike racks and, you know, the like. So it, to me, it wouldn't be necessarily a complete waste if it was used in a sense that people could, you know, skateboard up, bike ride up, electric scooter up and have a parking spot for those, for those items. You know, that they can stop and then get out and do their shopping or eating.
But a 15-foot setback from the property line might be still too much.
Yeah, it's very generous, but.
They wouldn't be, but they wouldn't be putting the bike path on the setback, would they? It would be in the public space.
But you would, you know, no one's going to let their nice bikes sit out on the street. Like, people keep those things close, especially when they stop at restaurants and whatnot.
You're saying for parking?
Yeah, for bike parking, yeah, things like that. But again, it is a generous space, but I can see with forward thinking of developers on their projects that something like that be utilized.
We're talking about expensive real estate though, when we're talking about trying to get units, density units.
Yeah, agreed.
So, let me think of, I'm just trying to put in my head the pieces that go into this. We're talking about, on one hand, bringing that building as close to the curb as we can for density purposes. We're talking about pushing it a little further back for landscaping and open space purposes. And we're talking about unanticipated potential use of that space for something like a sidewalk cafe, pushing that building closer, or further back as well. Is there anything else in my mind that I should be considering as far as what are the other pushes or pulls on that building setback?
Less setbacks is more unit space.
Right.
Inside the building.
Density, right.
Larger units, because we don't have to design, you know, squished.
So those are three pushes and pulls that I can see. Are there any others that anyone anticipates?
The one thing that I think, that I've heard from building folks is they, the more flexible the standard is, you know, the more they can say, all right, I want to, the less of a standard there is, right? If they can, if they want to build something that's going to have a 30-foot setback because they want to have a patio out front with fire pits and, and music or whatever, they're going to build that, right? If they want to do something where they're like, you know what, I don't want that, I want to just put my units on there and be good to go. That's what they would want to do. So, they want that, they, they obviously, they want the less, the less limitation on there that gives them the flexibility to build what they want. We do have to set some limitations and figure out what's appropriate because, you know, you have to create that vision for the area. It's, if these numbers are right, maybe. If they're not, then that's, that's understandable. But I think we just, we need to, like you said, Commissioner Spear, you are thinking about the right things, I think, as far as what the push and pull is there.
And, and so how about where, where the building is relative to the, the, the streets as opposed to where it is in the, in one of these three zones? Like, is it, is it on East Valley Parkway or is it on Date or something, you know, you know what I mean? Is it on the bigger, the more major road where you're going to be more likely to have the commercial? Or is it, is it in the middle of the residential area? And maybe you, you want the setback larger in those, I want to say, you know, even low dense, less dense areas, even though the density is, the zoning is the same. But the development's not going to be, the development is not going to be the same on every street.
That's already taken into account though by the zoning, right?
No, no, that's, that's what I'm trying to say is like, we, we have this square that's all just residential zoning. But maybe around the edges of that zone, it makes sense to have the setbacks be shorter. But in the middle of that zone, maybe the setback should be broader.
This, this is the map?
Yeah.
This is the, the different land use designations out there.
So in, in Ohio, for instance, you're going to, you're not going to have that as a commercial and environment as you are on East Valley Parkway.
But that's already taken into account because of the zoning? This is on.
Well, that's, that's a good point. I don't know, Pennsylvania is, is not. It's saying, one, one side of the street is going to have a wider setback than the other side of Pennsylvania. And maybe that's, maybe that's not the, maybe, maybe Pennsylvania should have the same setback on both sides of the street, right? And, and that could be smaller setback than on both sides of Ohio.
So you want the setbacks to be neighborhood specific?
Maybe street, street specific, maybe. Just an idea.
That get into complications as far as codifying that or supplying the developer with?
No, we already have defined the streets. Some of them are collector or, I mean, we have four, like, four different kinds of streets.
All right, well, we will see what we can come up with on setbacks, but that's going to be a challenging one. And I think, you know, the, the, doing it by street or is, is going to be a challenge when you've got different, you know, the same designation on different streets or different designations on the same street. I think Pennsylvania is going to be the, the challenging one, right? So, we may need to come up with a simpler mechanism than doing all of that, but we'll, you know, we'll analyze, we'll see.
Would, would you happen to know, this is a little arbitrary, but what's the depth of some of these lots? And especially in the urban area, are they, are they like 100 feet or?
One, I was going to say 70 by, 70 by 140.
That's kind of the norm.
50 by 140?
Yeah, 50, 50 by 140.
Okay.
Yeah, the smaller lots out there are about 7,000 square feet.
All right, so I just want to point out that it's nine o'clock and we haven't even got through Adam's things yet. I, I guess, I'd like to, I'd like to, to call the meeting at 10, but does every, do people think they want to stay later than 10?
10 is good.
And I'm going to ask, Chairman, if by 10 o'clock we feel some issues unresolved, do you want to pursue? Commissioner Weiler suggested inform a subcommittee to address this more in depth?
Well, then we need to talk about either a subcommittee or, you know, continuing this and we'll still be talking about it at our next meeting instead of staff bringing it back to us.
I mean, if there's a consideration of a subcommittee, I, I honestly think we need to decide that right now before we go a whole lot more further. I mean, if we're thinking, look, we're going to be doing this for another, well, our discussion has covered a couple of things and it's been an hour, essentially. So in a couple more hours, can we get through what we think might be everything?
I, I don't, I don't, I don't see that. We haven't got to the land, we haven't got to the land use matrix. I mean, that's going to be.
Right, and, and, you know, I know that the, the effort that we put in the Climate Action Plan, it was a lot. I mean, it took a lot of hearings to get us through all of that. I'd like to shorten that process a little, like, it was effective for what it was. You know, it, it took a lot of, you know, staff time, our time, everything versus.
Commissioner Weiler, so based on your experience, do you think a subcommittee, especially those of you who have much more expertise on the issues being brought up than I know I do, do you feel this will expedite the process?
It's a thought, but that subcommittee, it's, it's got to be done now.
Right, I think it could expedite the process, but I'm not sure if it meets everybody's schedule and if, if we, we can only have three people on that, we can only have three people on that subcommittee and if four people have a whole lot of stuff to talk about, well, then we're going to do it up here.
Can I ask first, before we get into that? Adam, I know we have a target, you mentioned the target for city council to see this. Let's go beyond that. I, I mean, this staff time, the development of this was extremely long. It was a lot of work. Yes, HCD has said, hey, look, once you get the East Valley plan, we're good to go. We exceeded our housing element deadline multiple times. What is our real push in order for, I mean, yeah, we, we have this target for city council. What if we pushed that target? What is, what is the driver for deadline here?
Well, I mean, it's really, we're, we're at a point where we are two years behind on getting our housing element certified. The state ultimately, if you keep just kicking the can, they're going to come down on you. They're going to talk with the Attorney General, file suit, it happens. It's, I think we are in their good graces right now, we definitely are because of all the hard work Veronica's done and the relationship she's developed with them. But, you know, that, that's a problem. The other issue is that there are grant funds up, out there that we would need to have a certified housing element in order to get. So, you know, there's, I don't know the number, but there's at least high, high six figures out there that we are entitled to annually, once we have a certified housing element. It, it's just, it's, it's getting to a point where we are really, a lot of the cities that had been really not getting anywhere on their housing elements, most of them are starting to check that box and get that done. And we're starting to look like we are not getting anywhere with it.
I appreciate that, but I don't want to shortcut this deliberative process because all of the other prior to this took so long. I don't want to shortcut what we're doing here. I feel like we're rushing it a little bit. I appreciate Commissioner Weiler's comments. We do need to put fire on this, I appreciate your comments. But, I don't think it's reasonable for HCD to expect that we're going to just flip this around when it's taken so long to get it to our plate. So, I, I mentioned this because before we start pushing into these hard fast, I'm, I'm looking at my personal, you know, I see, I see the deadline you're talking about, I'm going out of town for two weeks, I'll be out of the country. So I, I see things like that on my plate that conflict with the kind of timing we're talking about here as well. I'm just one person on this committee, but I look at the whole picture and I'm, I'm a little concerned by the, by the urgency of the, of the shortness of this.
So, I guess I have another idea that just struck me while we're talking about this. Could the Planning Commission have a, another unscheduled meeting next Tuesday?
Definitely could.
All right, let's go to, if everybody likes that idea, we can go to 10 o'clock and then we can reconvene next Tuesday. All right. Let's go to, if everybody likes that idea, we can go to ten o'clock and then we can reconvene next Tuesday.
Satisfactory.
It doesn't maybe help you if you're not.
I leave town next week. I leave town Thursday, so that could work for me as well.
All right.
Are, are we talking about meeting in the anticipation of finishing our work next Tuesday?
Yeah, we'll, we'll get through as much as we can tonight at ten o'clock and then we'll hit it again next Tuesday.
If I may, just for a moment, I want to go back to something that Mr. Feinstone mentioned early on.
Excuse me? Would you introduce yourself, please?
Andy Feinstein, Director Development Services.
Thank you.
So if you don't mind, I want to go back to what Mr. Feinstone said at the very beginning of this presentation, and that was a notice that was being given of a second Planning Commission meeting. So I, I don't want to rush to a decision because I think we are still intending to notify members of the public of a subsequent Planning Commission meeting. So I do want to share that. And Adam was also very, I, I think intentional and deliberate about his comments about that July nineteenth date, really referring to actions the state may take, but it's more than that. And I think that's something for the Planning Commission to be aware of. And without getting into a lot of specificity or detail there, recent state legislation, SB three thirty, did make changes to the Housing Accountability Act. And that does increase the city's vulnerability to legal challenges by the building industry developers where we do not have a certified housing element. That may potentially limit our ability to use the general plan and the zoning code to review new housing projects, new housing developments in the city. And that is an extreme vulnerability where the longer that we sit out there without a certified housing element, that puts us at risk. And I think that is something for us to think about. It's not a reason for us to rush through the process. I would like all of us to be very deliberate, very intentional about the work that we do and have confidence that at the end of the day, the East Valley specific plan, that it's the right tool, that it's implementing the general plan, that it's creating the housing units that we want in this community. But we should be aware of those threats and challenges to us as a city and the loss potentially to use our general plan and the housing element as we intended.
I just don't feel comfortable with how this is, this plan has been in place and maybe has been changed here and there, but how now at this point, there's just this sense of urgency, you know, so it seems like there's just a lot of pressure to, to speed through it, to rush through it. And I just think that we really need to take more time and just, you know, maybe the subcommittees, but I, I know we'll be here next Tuesday, but I don't think it's something that I feel comfortable making a decision for.
I, I would, I would, I, I probably agree with all the comments. I do appreciate your help and Adam's help in helping us understand the urgencies behind this. I also appreciate the suggestions and the willingness of, of each, each commissioner here to say, look, we'll, we'll do everything we can to expedite this process, not shortcut it, not rush it through, not do, without our, our due diligence on it, but if we stay late tonight and we come Tuesday and we still don't feel like we're done, I don't think we should rush it through. I think we should take the time needed, but hurry as much as we can.
How about the notion of having a subcommittee plus meeting on Tuesday, so therefore the subcommittee could thrash out X, Y, Z prior to Tuesday, at least get some, and then perhaps have the consultant participate in that particular activity and then bring it back on Tuesday? If you, I, I don't know if you can muster that, that's all pretty quick.
We can see what we can figure out on it. I, the one thing I'm liking about what's happening here is that, you know, everyone's got a diverse set of opinions. And if the two or three people who wind up on the subcommittee don't come to a consensus that, that some of the others here are, are on board with, you know, we're gonna be doing the subcommittee and this, right? So personally, my take is let's get together next Tuesday as, with this group. Let's keep chugging for another forty-five minutes tonight and see where we are at that point.
And perhaps we could start earlier, like six o'clock next Tuesday.
What I'd like to do is tentatively, we, what, at the end of this meeting, we can call that meeting for what we need to do. I need to verify availability of the dais here, of the chambers here. But if we call it for a certain time next week and on Tuesday, then I can verify that. And if it needs to change, we'll post something, we'll post a, a change of location, change of time, whatever it is.
Okay, so, does, well, before, before we carry on, I think we should firm up this next Tuesday. Is six o'clock more appealing to people?
Yes, I think so.
Okay, so six, it will be, it will be, at ten o'clock, it will be six o'clock. Okay, um, are we finished with setbacks?
I'm good.
Okay. Did you have, did you have another, did you have something else, Adam?
Ground floor retail.
Oh, yeah, this is a.
So, you know, again, this is one of those things that it may be an impediment to construction and, and to housing, right? If you're requiring these residential units to be built to commercial standards, it adds a significant expense. I've been told it's somewhere a hundred, a hundred dollars a square foot more to go to a commercial standard versus a residential standard. If it's being used for a commercial space, great, but you've got two issues. You've got either it's being built, it's much more expensive to build and it's being used as residential, or it's being built commercial and sitting vacant. Right? Because there's, there's a lot of unoccupied ground floor retail in a lot of mixed use areas these days. I know that's the goal, is to be able to get that ground floor activated. And in the long run, hopefully that happens. But in some of the areas that are not the mixed use area, that are the rural, I'm, I'm sorry, the urban five designation, is it appropriate there to require developers to spend that money in an area that's really only going to be retail or office anyway, right? It's not going to be that activated scene that you would hope for and why you need the retail type space.
So is that area, I, I know it's all of Grand, is it also part of Ash?
Uh, let's, of course, I have to go back twenty-five slides here. So it's one side of Ash.
Yeah, okay. So it's, right, it's all, all of Grand, one side of Ash, and is it, is that it? Or is it Pennsylvania?
That's it.
You have to look at the two maps together and you can't do that, right?
Right. So it's the, it's the north side of Ash and then all of Grand. I'm sorry, Olive Valley is the area that would be, that would require the ground floor. It's in the mixed use, whereas. Sorry, I'm probably going the wrong way. So the area that's purple require, will hypothetically still require that ground floor retail build out, but the area that's orange would not if we'd make that change.
Right, okay. And, and I try not to go first, but in this case, I had a lot of concerns about the Grand Avenue part of this because we've also limited the height of the building to thirty-five feet. So I'm not sure if we can build three stories and have one of them, the first one be sixteen feet high and meet thirty-five feet. Design person, can you do that?
Not three floors.
No. So nothing on Grand would be three stories then because the first story is going to be vacant or have have huge ceilings. But it's not, that, that, that is not zoned for commercial. But in this plan, there is some commercial allowed in, in the residential zone. I, I'm, I'm still having trouble getting my head wrapped around that. It's not a mixed use zone, but is commercial allowed in residential?
Adam, we're talking about shell requirements for the bottom floor.
Correct.
Help me understand what what I did, I'm thinking from a structural standpoint, that doesn't seem that big of a deal. So maybe I'm not catching the picture on what these requirements are spiking for these people. I mean, what type of framing they use, what, what is this that?
You, you would actually, as a structural engineer, you'd know that better than I would. I, I don't have that type of technical knowledge. I'm relaying information that I've heard from, from industry folk. So in fact, I think it was, there was a letter that we received back in twenty twenty-one from the Building Industry Association making that statement.
I would like to know too, because usually it is a shell and any commercial or retail space is going to come in and do their own tenant improvement. You know, so you're talking about, you know, concrete floors, polished.
And I don't see a big difference, honestly. I don't see where it is.
Uh, yeah, but there's going to be residential zones. I mean, it's residential. Well, it's a residential area and it's, I can see somebody wanting to build just residential in their residential area.
That's a different question. He's just curious about the shell question.
Well, they'll have to build it to the commercial standard. And, and then, so it won't, but it'll be residential, so it won't have just a polished cement floor and bare walls. It'll have, it'll be decorated like your house. So it has to be built to the commercial standard, but then now.
But we're talking about shell requirements, not finished build out, right? So I don't, I don't see, your TI costs are going to be different, but that's your TI cost. It's not your shell.
No, that's per tenant.
Right.
So.
So I'm not seeing this big cost implication here. I don't know where that hundred dollars a square foot is coming from, honestly.
I guess my concern would be the sixteen foot ceiling height.
That would be something.
So regardless of everything else, you get a sixteen foot ceiling height, that's a two-story, ultimately, it'll be a two-story building. Because you, you're not, you're just not going to get, you're not going to do eight foot ceilings. No, I don't know that anybody does eight foot ceilings anymore in residential. It's typically what, nine or better?
And, and it has to be, it has to be twenty-five feet deep to, or twenty-five percent of the lot or whatever the heck that number is.
Yeah. So that requirement within the residential areas, even on Grand, I don't know, you allow for it, I guess, for that commercial component, but to require a sixteen foot essentially ceiling because maybe it might be commercial one day? I, I'm, I'm having a tough time with that, especially along Grand.
Adam, where does the sixteen foot requirement come from? Is that code for?
I don't think it's necessarily code, but I think it's what is anticipated to be necessary if you're going to have ventilation and that kind of thing for commercial uses.
Restaurants, hoods, whatever that might be.
So the idea behind this, I guess, the drive behind this is to say, look, oh, we screwed up. We got a built, building here or buildings. Now we want to convert them and it's too late. It's built out. We can't make commercial out of this. You're saying, I think, you're suggesting, look, in some of these areas, we're never going to do that. Right? Is that where you're going with this? Is why are we, why are we requiring that, knowing that that's never going to end up there in the Ohio area, for instance? Is that the rationale?
Well, you know, the areas on the interior here on Ohio, on the, on Pennsylvania, they're, they're not intended to have that. It's only the areas that would have, let me see.
Said you have to put both maps together. It's, it's, it's only these streets.
So it's only the main streets there that would be required to have that. But is it even appropriate on Grand? Is it even appropriate on Ash?
So these streets are irrespective of the zoning. It's like I was talking about the setbacks. See, that this is commerce, developed for, built for commercial regardless of what zone it's in.
So right now, along Valley, let's say, well, that's, that's not what's being, that's not what's being built. They're not putting sixteen foot ceilings in there. And they, anything new would have to be, is what you're saying? The sixteen foot along that quarter? Right.
So my, my thing is, I'm not saying we're never going to get that. The question is, do we want to hold people to this so that that is an option in the future?
That, that's pointing to an issue, the sixteen foot ceiling. Are there others, other than the sixteen foot ceiling?
Well, and the potential that, of the cost, but I don't know that that's, you know, I'm not gonna, I'm not, I don't know the construction cost for that kind of thing well enough to say that that number that I had been told was, is accurate or not.
Right. But I'm, I'm suggesting that, that's a pretty onerous requirement to say, look, anything you put along there, it's got to be sixteen feet. Are there other onerous requirements as well in the, in that, in that commercial designation that we should look at and shake our heads at maybe?
I mean, the, the setback issues that we've discussed, that kind of thing, but nothing, you know, this is just another one of those, hey, is this makes sense for the standard in this area?
Right. I, I think the, it's still, the sixteen foot ceiling is still the driving force, but it precludes, it potentially precludes three-story buildings on Grand.
Because of the sixteen.
And because, and the thirty-five foot maximum height.
Thirty-five, right, cap.
Which we don't have thirty-five foot cap anywhere else, right? Or do we?
So perhaps to, to leave the requirement for Valley Parkway since it's already, you know, a fairly significant road and have Grand be more flexible, not, not have that standard. I mean, that's essentially what we're proposing, correct?
Valley Parkway is already going to be mixed use.
Right. That's what I'm saying. So, and therefore on Grand, perhaps not, not have that requirement.
Right, because Grand is residential and it's only thirty-five feet.
So maybe talk to the consultant about that.
So the, what about, what about Ash? Right. See, Adam was bringing up Ash. See, now my concern about the thirty-five feet is gone because that's fifty-five feet.
Right.
But you still have the sixty, you still have the sixteen foot ceiling and the twenty-five feet room. So I think that's why they, you say the construction costs are higher because you're supposed to leave all that space empty. So you need to reinforce the ceiling and then whatever weight you put on top, blah, blah, blah.
So collectively, what of, what are our thoughts? Is it because I see what Commissioner Barbe says is, yeah, well, you know, you just eliminate that on Grand, potentially keep it on Ash and, and Valley Parkway. Definitely on Valley Parkway. So now the question be, if we're kind of in agreement, definitely on Valley Parkway. I think no on Grand. And then now our discussion is what do we do with Ash?
Leave Ash alone where it borders the residential area.
So Ash wouldn't have, are you saying Ash doesn't have the sixteen foot?
Could require it on the two, the three blocks that are brown.
It's only on the.
The commercial area, on the corners.
Commercial mixed use.
I mean, to me, that makes sense.
Remove it from the residential.
Exactly, exactly. And that way you're leaving potential in the mixed use areas, but in leaving it a lot more flexible in the residential area.
So we checked a box.
If you're looking for consensus, that's.
There we go.
I'll speak up for a change.
All right. Thank you, guys. Let's see if I had anything else there. Parking is something that I think, I don't want to discuss in any detail. It's something that I think I've already acknowledged that we, well, I don't need to discuss it with you guys in any detail by all means. If you want to discuss it, please, but it's something that I think I've acknowledged already that needs to be cleaned up a little bit in the document. There's the conflicts between max, you know, maximum, minimum and, and some other reference kind of things in there. So if you guys want to weigh in on it right now, by all means, we can have that discussion. Or I think that was, yeah, that was the last one I had, so kind of floor is yours.
Yeah, no, I, I'm okay. We can, we can take this, this one and, because it might take a while, but maybe this is the last one for tonight. And we'll at least, we'll at least get your list taken care of. So go ahead. Who wants to talk about parking first? Oh, what page, what page is this in the East Valley Plan? Thank you.
What was it? Forty-eight?
Adam, your, your, your comment earlier, I think, was the inconsistency between residential and other that would drive maximum and minimum and make it confusing. I, when you said that, I thought, look, nobody's driving to put more parking in. That's just not a drive, right? They're driving to put less parking in. So the minimum and the consistency with staying with minimums makes a whole lot of sense to me rather than throwing this new idea of maximum. I don't know why, I don't know why we're throwing in maximums.
I actually like the maximum. It reminds me of living in Portland.
Why? I'm, I'm curious why. I didn't, it didn't make sense to me. I, I'm curious why.
To me, especially because you guys know how much I hate the parking requirement. To me, especially because you guys know how much I hate the parking requirements that our city goes by, I think we should not be designing cities around parking, period. I like the idea of maximum because it does, it kind of says, that's it. You know, it's not a minimum where they can decide, oh, well, then I'm going to do three parking spaces for every unit. I mean, no one would have the money or the space on a site plan to do that, but I like the idea that we're finally saying no to parking and yes to housing.
I, but I see it the opposite. I see that someone in your position, or even a developer or a building owner is going to say, look, how little can I get away with on parking? They're not going to be driving, yeah, I want to put in more parking. That's just not the drive. We're saying, look, at least put this much in. That, to me, makes sense. I don't see the drivers, who's putting in more parking than they need?
Nobody.
Nobody, no, that's.
Right.
You're giving in the, you're giving the.
Developer the flexibility to determine how much parking they have, but not beyond X, which already would be set by a drive to have less parking, correct?
Well, here's, here's what I'm getting at, is I, looking at Seattle, dealing in Seattle, dealing in downtown Seattle prior to them ripping out parking structures and discouraging parking, it's a mess to deal in downtown Seattle. Going to Farmer's Market in San Luis Obispo, little town where everybody congregates downtown for Farmer's Market on Thursday nights, it's fantastic to go park downtown because they built parking structures. I'm more interested not in eliminating parking like Seattle did, which is a royal mess, but in providing efficient use of space to provide adequate parking. So rather than say, let's stop people from having parking spaces, I say, let's make sure they have a minimum of spaces, make sure they use their parking space efficiently. And, and, and I'm not personally in favor of saying, let's, let's try to stop parking because people are going to park, they're going to drive their cars, and if we don't plan for how to accommodate that, we just create messes like in Seattle. Getting around there is a mess. So I'm not in favor of capping, and I don't think there's a drive for people to say, boy, I want to put in more parking. I think the minimum, which has always been used, makes a whole lot of sense in terms of, of not, uh, for those reasons, I also think it provides consistency with other portions like you're talking about, where we'd have a max and a min, in a mixed use is really complicated. So I don't see the downside to it, I guess, is what I'm seeing. I don't see a developer saying, boy, I want to put too much parking in, they won't let me.
They never will.
Right.
I can promise you that.
Right. So I, I, I don't get, I don't get the maximums. I don't understand.
So, so we have some goals in this plan, um, that conflict with, uh, parking and cars. The, the goals say we want public transportation, we want walkability, we want community spaces, and parking, parking conflicts with those goals. I mean, I, I, I didn't expect that we were, you know, we, we're going to have a lot of things to talk about, we didn't start at the beginning of the document and go through the goals, because I didn't think we were going to have in much debate about that. But, but the goals are to reduce parking.
I, okay, so I appreciate, understand, support the goals, but given some support to Commissioner Spear's reasoning, I mean, we live in a city where housing has become so unaffordable, we're seeing, especially in rentals, families are having to double up. And what we had planned, once upon a time, to provide adequate parking for future tennis apartments, is no longer adequate, as they now they combat for parking in their, in their own complexes, they're battling each other on the streets, as the cars are constantly lining up along the curves. It seems to me, I understand Commissioner Spear's reasoning. In fact, I'm also, I didn't really care for that I saw in our incentive programs to help encourage the developers of projects to provide more open space, or, uh, to switch over to more commercial or mixed residential. One of the incentives was to allow them to even reduce the parking 10% further, and that's actually an incentive I wish I wouldn't see in the pack, in the menu that we're offering them. So I'm just stating that I, I understand your reasoning and I, I, I have, I share some of your concerns.
Okay, so, um, is perhaps before you guys joined the planning commission, we had a discussion about parking, and, and I expressed a lot of my, um, opinions about that. And that includes that you, you talked about housing affordability, and I think that all the parking we put into housing exasperates that. It causes, we're using the land for parking and for garages, for, specifically for covered parking, and that's driving up the cost of housing, making it less affordable. Um, I, I mentioned that I, I, um, the history of me owning property and how most of them never had covered parking, and that, that helped me trim my expenses. And, and so I'm not in favor of covered parking, and I'm not in favor of maximums or minimum parking, I'm in favor of letting the applicant decide how much parking his project needs. And there was a lot of testimony here that the developer would never put in extra parking. Well, somebody has just proposed a few weeks ago, a big development next to the 15, where there's a church and it's a lot of open space, he's going to build a shitload of dwelling units, and he wants to put 50% more parking than is necessary, because he's going to make this a, a driving community for, that people are not going to take the buses or anything, because, well, the location doesn't suit it. But he's, he's overparking it by like 50%, because that's the project he wants to build. And I think if developers want to build a project with zero parking, that's great. I mean, they're, they're going to build the project that meets their market, and they're going to park it accordingly.
But that's in a, that's not in a downtown or a soon-to-be, you know, downtown area. So I think that's just a completely different story. If you, if you're building units that are not close to anything, you better be building that parking lot. But we're envisioning this space.
As an urban, as an urban center with, without, without cars.
Transit-friendly, you know, development.
I, I agree.
For this, yeah. And I, I also just see it always that, you know, we're trying to get units per, bedrooms per unit, I mean, in, in my projects, and, you know, those two parking spots that you always have to have in a, in a downtown urban area where, you know, one of them's going to be having a bike, you know, if they even drive to work anymore. So I, there is a shift in how people live, and I don't think it includes, you know, parking. Of course, there's going to be people that continue to fight for it, you know? It's, it's not going to be an easy battle, but I think we need to start making decisions that shape how we're going to interact, you know, in the future.
I appreciate all these comments. I, I think what I've heard in, in terms of a variety of comments, a couple of principles, one of them being, um, allowing the flexibility for people to decide, not trying to mandate what they do to a certain extent. Also, taking into account, we have communities, we're, this is planning. If we let the Wild West happen, things get built, and then we go, man, we should have put some controls in place, because on, on its own, things don't happen quite right, and then it's built. So we do have to have some minimums, some drivers in that. But I think, and I, I see perspectives in all different ways, but I don't want Escondido to be a place where you can't go to Farmer's Market and park your car. I, 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 I see Seattle and I see them saying, we're going to, we're going to get people to not drive by not putting parking in. Reality is, that's not the way it works. People still have cars, and then you have a parking problem downtown. So I just want to, I want to temper our desires to push efficiency in, in, in walking traffic and bike traffic with the reality that people still have cars. So balance there, is all I'm saying.
If I could, and listen, everybody, and everybody's got a valid point here, truly do, but I'm really on the side with Commissioner Spear, where I, I think we have to have some minimums, maybe they're less than what our minimums are today, because, because I agree, that flexibility needs to kind of be built in to accomplish other things. But to put a maximum, like you said, most developers, they're going to go the minimum route, but there's going to be those occasions where somebody goes, you know what? My development and all of my other ones that I do, this is the problem I've been seeing, and I would prefer to have two spaces per unit. Why? Because I'm offering that, I'm going to charge a little bit more for rent, because I'm going to grab those guys that have two or three cars. It becomes economics then. But allow that guy to do that. That, that's how I see it. Or, or some mechanism by which they can go beyond a maximum if the commission decides, no, we should have maximums. There's got to be an escape route for that, that guy, that one developer that wants to come in and do something a little beyond what this maximum, you know, ceiling is for parking.
So, so it's interesting, so you agree with him, but on the opposite side, you don't want a maximum, and he.
No, Commissioner Spear was saying, don't have a maximum.
He's saying, he said have a, you need a minimum, right?
But I still believe in the minimum as well.
We have minimums on all the other, all the other development standards, right? That's where it is.
Well, it's in the code.
Adam was saying, we have a conflict because we have min and maxes in the same mixed use. So it's complicated there.
Yeah, that, that is the, the biggest concern that I see is, how are we going to implement something where you're saying you've got, you can have no more than two parking spaces for that residential portion, but you need to have at least eight for the commercial portion? Okay, well, I'm just going to provide 12 for the commercial portion to get the extra that I need for my residential, right? So it's, it's, it's a, if we want to have minimums, we need to be more deliberate about that. Otherwise, you're setting up these loopholes, right? So that's the, that's the concern I was seeing.
I, I think you meant if you want maximums, you have to be more deliberate.
Correct, I'm sorry. Yes, correct. Thank you.
Where did we end up?
Do I have a consensus? It seems like everybody has a, a different opinion here.
Not sure there is a consensus. I agree with Barry and Stan. Unless you count the three of us as a consensus.
So you, the three of you agree there shouldn't be a maximum?
That's what, I don't think there should be a maximum.
Well, I don't think there should be a maximum either.
So if I can provide just a little bit of input on what the standards are here, um, so we do still have a minimum of one covered space per unit. I know covered is an issue for some of us, but, um, one, let's just say, we have a minimum of one space per unit regardless. These numbers here are what the minimum is currently in our zoning code. It's very similar, I think it's one and a half for one bedroom and 1.75 for two, two, two for a three-bedroom. So it's, it's almost identical to what's in our zoning code currently, except this is going to be your, your ceiling and not your floor. Except now there's absolutely no flexibility for the studio. It has to have exactly one parking space.
Correct.
And which is, to, in my opinion, is way too many.
For a studio?
Yeah.
Yeah. So this is just language, the maximum.
What do you mean? It's a standard.
I mean, you said, this is changed to establishing a maximum as opposed to a minimum.
These numbers here, they're, they're, they're the same numbers basically that are in our zoning code, except for the specific plan here, they're identified as a maximum, you can't go more than that. In the zoning, in the zoning code, it's a minimum, you have to go at least that. So it's the same numbers, it's just whether it's a floor or a ceiling.
So consistency. Yeah, I understand the consistency part. I just like how maximum. You're done.
So, so I'm hearing there should be, the consensus is there should be a minimum, and...
Yes.
Okay, so I'm okay with that, as long as it's not this number, right? This is not going to be the minimum.
One.
Any of these numbers shouldn't be the minimum.
So are you suggesting that they should be lower than?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Lower than one?
Yes.
For the studio?
At least for the, yes, and maybe for the, some of these other ones too. Yeah, I think we, I think we are overparking for this, we're trying to create an urban, walkable transit environment with, but we have, we're going to now have a minimum parking that's the same. So it, we're going to have, minimalist parking is the same as any other part of town, but now you also need to have bike stuff, you have to have, um, bus stuff, and you have to have, uh, drop-off and pickup stuff. So we're creating more unlivable things in our more livable area.
Agreed.
I'm, I'm, what I'm seeing here for residential is the minimum is one. That's what I'm seeing.
No, no, they mean that one of them has to be covered.
No, well, no, it means that you have to maintain one space, minimum one space per unit, and it had, you can't, you can't go less than one regardless, whether it's covered or not.
Even for a studio.
Yeah, that's how this reads, yes.
I'm not clear. So, but, but that's a little bullet at the bottom, like, like one of the required spaces has to be covered. It's not saying, it's, it's not saying, never mind the number up here, one is the minimum. In the table, it's a little footnote at the bottom, by the way, one of these spots needs to be covered.
It says each, I believe it says each, each, um, each unit requires one covered spot, one covered space. At least one covered space is what it says.
Requiring one cover space is the hang-up here, get rid of the covered requirement.
No, what he's saying is that it doesn't say that it has to be covered, he's saying it's one space.
It does say that it has to be covered, but either way, whether it has to be covered or not, it requires a space.
He's saying it requires a minimum of one space, and I, I didn't read it that way. I read it that you still, like, one bedroom is 1.55, one of which has to be covered. He's saying, no, it says 1.55, but never mind, it's really only one.
1.55 is the max, as this reads.
Okay.
But the one is the minimum.
The one is the minimum.
So I'm not sure we're getting consensus though on whether or not there should be, that, that generally we're overparked in this plan as stated here, because it, it sounds like some of us feel very strongly that we are overparked, there's too much parking allotted in this formula.
So where, what?
And some of us are saying, no, this is perfectly sufficient. Am I hearing that?
I, I, I haven't heard, so for a number, a, a, a threshold, let's, let's say this is, for argument's sake, we're not talking about maximums, let's say it's minimums, but this has been put forth, and this is where, where it currently stands. Without this, uh, okay, so if you're suggesting that this is high, what is the basis for that, and what are you suggesting, I guess? High based on what? I mean.
Are you asking me?
Anyone that's suggesting this is high.
I think having a requirement for a parking space for a studio is not necessarily something that shows that we're trying to create a transit-friendly, walkable, uh, section of town. You know, I think at least the studio could be nothing. The two bedrooms, I only really believe that one parking space should be required, and that's just based on my experience designing these units.
Yeah, so, so I, I'm saying this based on experience too, that I used to live in an SRO, and there was probably 16 or 17 of them, and there was three cars.
So I guess what I'd be interested in is, what's a typical range, and where are we falling within that?
Right, and that's where I was trying to go with the general consensus, if, if there's a, one group feels somewhat strongly that, that we were, we're overparked, Adam, so perhaps you can chat with a consultant to find out what best practices are relative to a city of our size, relative to downtown density, I mean, trying to increase our density, et cetera, and then get to some more specifics as per Barry's query.
I would be interested in exactly as you characterize that, but one step further, and that is, there's policy pushing and there's reality, right? And, and I'd be, I'd be interested in knowing, like, you could say, well, we want to push everyone out of their cars, so we're going to suggest, we're going to push this, this direction, but then there's a reality of, but how many people in studio apartments actually own a car? If that number is everybody, then we're kidding ourselves and not providing adequate, right? So.
But not in urban areas, and this is what we're trying.
But that's what I'm, that's what I want to know, is what's reality and what's policy push? What are the ranges so we can make an educated decision?
Well, yeah, but we already passed reality because reality is, is they are using maximums, and you guys don't want to use maximums. You want to use a minimum, so we've already disregarded reality.
Well, we're trying to figure out a number here, so what do we base it on?
Trying to find out, figure out our minimum. Right? And, and is the minimum the current code, or is the minimum something that we come up with? That's how I'm kind of seeing this. And it's not this. Right?
So like I mentioned before, this is what our code currently has as minimums. We go for the area, you know, i- if, if we are looking at doing something different than a maximum, we've really got to look at the impacts that that has on some of the goals that are established in, in the policies that are established in the early parts of the specific plan. And it, without having done that, I think we're doing a disservice to try to settle on, on a number right now, right? So I, I, I'll talk to our consultant, see what they say about, you know, the typical expectation of what would be required as a minimum here. But I think that the trend that they're seeing and that I've heard in the industry as well is that, you know, minimums aren't the way to do it anymore. In urbanized area, minimums are not the way that things are done. The, the, the progressive thought and trend and, and way that parking standards are set up these days in urbanized areas is a maximum. Some places just have no requirement, they, they don't require any parking. But, yeah, there's, there's ceilings on newer, in newer thought processes on these things in urbanized areas, so.
My concern is those are policy pushes, those are policy pushes to drive behavior, which may or may not be a good thing. But I've seen them in other places where it's detrimental as well. So I'm, I'm concerned in making our Escondido decision in the best interest of Escondido. And that is a balance between policy where we want to go, where we want to push people, and reality that we're not creating street parking problems.
But also having a vision to create something that is not just the typical Escondido vision. And Adam, I would ask in that, the consultant, are they talking to transit-oriented groups like Circulate San Diego? Those types of organizations that are now, you know, pushing for alternative means of transportation beyond cars? I mean, at some point, the city needs to have a vision. We can't just keep on saying, cars are reality, cars are reality. For a lot of people, they're really starting to not be anymore. You know, for a, a younger generation, it's a totally different world.
I think that's part of it, that is part of it. Definitely, we want to balance policy and pushing with reality and, and make sure that we're not pushing too far in one direction or the other, right?
Well, I mean, I'm for the push, so--
So, so I'm--
I'm also about getting some real data, if there is data, to say, what is the reality for Escondido? If there, if it's out there.
Yeah, I don't know how much I'm going to be able to get on that. If we're, if we're gonna put an RFP out for a consultant to do that, I don't think I'm going to be able to get that from the consultant that I've got towards the end of their contract on this.
Right, so I think, so, so part of the problem with getting real data from Escondido is Escondido doesn't have this kind of standard. So you're not, you're not going to get real data. You know what I mean?
When I think of real data, and I appreciate your comment, I think of, hey, we can, we can find out without doing a study, you know, how many, how many people in studio apartments typically have a car? That's probably Google information, right? We, we don't have to do a study for that, just to get an idea of saying, hey, is, instead of pie out of the sky numbers and saying, well, that sounds good, base it off of something reasonable, so.
So, so I, I had a conversation with Adam about one of the other parking requirements in here, and it was for a skilled nursing facility. And we did a calculation and, and of an existing facility, and we came up with about ninety parking spaces would be required. And there's one in town with a dozen parking spaces. I said, so they're never going to build a new skilled nursing facility here because they can't park it. You know, they can't compete, not, not only can they not park it, they can't compete with one that only has twelve parking spaces.
So that's based on real, real numbers? I, I, that's exactly the line of thinking that I think, you know, you mentioned, which, we should be basing this off of what?
No vision.
No, vision, vision is balanced with reality. I'm not saying no vision. I'm saying, let's, let's look at the numbers so we can make an educated decision that takes into account what you're saying and, you know, what you're saying. I think that's the basis for making an educated decision.
But, but I'm also here, and I think we have to start the next meeting with, at page one, with the goals, what this, what this plan is meant, meant to create. All right.
I would encourage everyone to look at those pretty carefully before we sit down.
Right. All right, so we're on for one week from today.
And the other thing, if I could request, if you do have, if you do note things in there that you've seen and you want to provide something to me ahead of time that I can have summarized so I can, you know, maybe try to get the part of this discussion on paper and, and presented to you instead of everyone having, having to start from square one with their opinions while we're here. I think that might be helpful, so.
And we should send those to you by like tomorrow or the next day or--
By, by, by probably the end of the week.
Yeah, because you need to prepare yourself.
Yep. So I think we've decided then that we will continue this hearing on, or this meeting on Tuesday, six o'clock.
Tuesday.
And I will verify availability of the, of council chambers here. And if it is going to be something other than that, I will let you know. And otherwise, I'm ready to, ready to do it.
Thanks, everyone, this has been great. Appreciate it. No, I'm gonna, I'm continuing the meeting, right?
Fine with me.